All right, everybody. Thank you for your patience. I will call to order the regular meeting of the City of San Gabriel Tuesday, December nineteenth at six forty-one PM. Pledge allegiance tonight will be by Vice Mayor Wu.
Please rise and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, indivisible and just one. Thank you. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Harrington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wu.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Minchaka.
Here.
Thank you. We'll now have some announcements from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to receive city council agendas, please sign up on the city's website.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda order. Do we have any objection to the agenda order? Seeing none, so approved. Next item, please.
Presentation A, introduction of Police Department employee Police Officer Nori Smith. Police Chief Elizalde will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Harrington and city council members. It's with honor and privilege that I get to stand before you and the community to present to you our newest officer, Nori Smith. Nori was born and raised by her mother, Lawana Pope, in Carson, California, and at the age of five, had a passion for playing basketball. She later went on to become athlete of the year when she graduated from Gar High School in 2018, also with distinguished honors. Nori went on to attend Cal State University Long Beach and graduated in 2022 with a Bachelor of Science degree in criminology and criminal justice with honors. Her excellence didn't stop there. While at Long Beach, in addition to graduating with honors, she was named the dean and president's, named to the dean and president's list for her academic excellence for all four years. Following her graduation from Cal State University Long Beach, Nori attended Rio Hondo Police Academy Class Two One Five and graduated from the academy just this past November in 2023. Nori was named the most inspirational cadet of her class. And tonight, we have Nori, Nori's mother, Lawana Pope, and her uncle Chief Roderick Armelin, who will be
I, Nori Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of United, of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Officer Smith, would you like to say a few words to the council and the community? No pressure. You don't have to.
It's an honor to stand before you all today. It's an honor to be a part of this great city of the City of San Gabriel. I am beyond grateful for the opportunity you guys have all have granted me to be a part of this city and to work for the city of San Gabriel. That is truly a city with a mission. Again, I express my true gratitude, and I am truly honored to wear a San Gabriel Police Department badge, and I'm excited and honored to be spending my career in San Gabriel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you will allow us, we'd like to get a picture with the council.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
In the middle, please. Yes, sir.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Jesse.
Okay. Over here, please. Thank you. Okay, right here. Citywide communication survey results. Public Information Officer Clara Tsang will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Harrington, city council, and members of the public. I'm here today to share with you results from a citywide communication survey that we undertook earlier this year. It was part of our efforts to evaluate and refresh the city's various communication channels. To do so, we wanted to understand how San Gabriel residents like to receive news from us and what topics they're interested in hearing about. We kept it pretty short and sweet so that it can be an easy task for our residents and so we can maximize participation. The process started at the end of 2022 as we looked to rebrand our grapevine guide, which is now the Discover San Gabriel magazine. And so we shared this publicly January through July 2023. Our target audience is residents in our city, since the communication platforms that were being evaluated are all geared towards our residents. The survey was available online through our website, City Beat Newsletter, and Recreation E-Newsletter, on social media, which is Facebook, Instagram, WeChat, as well as mail as the printed postcards to residential households. Now, with this method, we basically covered all residential addresses, but with this sort of blanketed approach, and it was posted through multiple channels, we most likely had some biases that I'd like you to keep in mind as we look at these results. For example, we might be double counting who those, for those who took our survey online and in a postcard, or some households, they may have generations who are on social as well as getting our mail postcards and then taking it without talking to each other, because that's what we do nowadays. Beating online also opens it up to community members who might not live in San Gabriel but who are actually very active in our community. So while the direction and insights provided by the survey respondents are valuable, we just have to keep in mind that these, there are possible biases within these results. So as I mentioned, the questions we asked are pretty simple. We asked, how do you usually get the news? What kind of news are you interested in hearing from us? What languages do you want to receive news in? And what is the best way to reach you with the information about events and activities? We also translated the survey into Spanish and Chinese, the two other commonly used languages in our community, to try to capture as many residents as we can. This is how the survey ended up looking on various platforms. The online ones went out in January, and the mailed version was sent out in February and March, and we received responses all the way through July. In total, we received eight hundred and thirty-six responses, with eighty-eight percent coming back from the mail and twelve percent coming from social media and online platforms. Here is the breakdown of the ages of those who responded to our survey. Green is thirty-four to forty-four years old, which is almost twenty-two percent of the respondents. Purple is forty-five to fifty-four percent of, sorry, forty-five to fifty-four years old, which is nineteen percent. Blue is fifty-five to sixty-four years old, thirty percent, and pink is sixty-five plus, which makes up twenty-four percent. And just so you have a comparison, here is the latest demographics available from the Economic Partnership that reflects what our community is made out of. So as you can see, it's a pretty, pretty similar split there. And here's how the community referred to receive our city news, which they can pick multiple choices from, so they don't have to just pick email or a mailed platform. But most of them do prefer some sort of email communications, and then almost half of them do want some sort of print format, which can, which can be in a magazine or newsletter. Twenty-nine percent can go on our website, and they prefer to find information that way, and the rest of them do look for social media information. We have another slide that looks slightly similar, but this compares how they usually get the news versus how they want to get news from us. So for this, it's still pretty similar, but more people want some sort of print medium instead of online medium. So for, from us, they would hear, want to hear more online than print. Moving on here, the news topics that our community is most interested in, from, with one being the most of interest to six being the least of interest. So a lot of people want to hear about our events. They want to hear about activities and classes. About half of them are interested in public safety, construction projects, you know, where the roadworks are. Can I travel on Valley Boulevard? And then, not as interesting, it's probably our city council actions and policies, as well as new businesses and developments. No offense to you all. And then the last one we asked about is what language do they prefer for communications from us? English is, of course, number one. And then we have almost thirty percent looking for news in Chinese, four percent looking for news in Spanish, and a little bit more than one percent looking for information in Vietnamese. So based on these survey results, I'm pleased to say that our current communication strategy does align with our community's needs and wants. We are serving information up in Spanish and Chinese with Vietnamese in the mix where our budget allows. And we're also focused on our digital and print platforms to make sure we're serving as many residents as we can. And our news topic priorities have changed from more government-centric topics from two years ago to more community-facing experiences. And so those are checking the boxes for us as well. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Clara. Does anyone have questions for Clara? Councilmember Minchaka.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Clara. You still throw me off a little bit with your accent, I have to tell you.
I'm so sorry.
Who's that?
My, my alter ego.
Yeah. So on page three, you talk about potential biases, and the potential bias that comes out for me is the age, because if you go to page, let's see, is that age group, oh, there it is, page seven, the age breakdown. You know, we're missing eighteen to thirty-four, so it's about fifteen years that we're missing from the survey, the respondents. So, and then, of course, the San Gabriel demographics, same thing. They're not even including the eighteen to thirty-four, or eighteen to thirty, and they should count. So is there anything more we can do just for that cohort? Because then I look at page nine, and we have such an overwhelming number, fifty-one percent for magazines and newspapers. And I know that eighteen to thirty, thirty years old, thirty-five, you know, they're very environmentally conscious. That's the last thing they want. I know I get that all the time, you know, why do we still get magazines and newspapers? Everything should be done email or website. And so I was thinking that are we considering maybe continuing to have this kind of survey, maybe at some of our events that attract more the youth? You know, what comes to mind is the dumpling and beer, but then we have a whole nother group of people. I mean, we have people from everywhere there. There's the Lunar Event. There's the Summer Concert. It's mostly families, but there's youngsters there, too. Is there something that we're going to try to do to try to understand, you know, what is it going to take for them to be more involved, you know, more engaged? Maybe they are coming to events, but, you know, how can we reach that group better?
Sure. I think that's a very good question. So just to stress your first concern, saying it's not a exact replicate of our demographic. And if we do a citywide survey, which is utilizing just staff resources, it's almost impossible to, to have an exact replicate. We will have to work with some sort of survey consultant, similar to what we're doing with the Public Safety Headquarters, to match that, because they do have a very statistical approach to make sure, yes, we're doing five percent millennials. So we need to do five percent and make sure we're not overskewing either way. And so in short, if we're just using our resources, it's going to be hard to not specially pick a group that is already interested or a group that only is interested in TikToks, for example. So we can, I know the Hear Commission has done some sort of youth survey to understand what their interests are and how they like to get the information. And yes, a lot of them do care more about social media than, than your newspapers and magazines. Can we get a representing figure for that? We probably can't.
Yeah, I was going to mention the Hear Commission, so you beat me to it.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that, that was just my concern. My biggest concern is that I feel like we're just somehow, not just you, but all, you know, we just constantly seem to be missing that group, and I don't have the answer, but something for all of us to think about what we can do to bring them more, more, so they can be more engaged. And, you know, topics of interest, I don't take it personally. I know we're on the bottom, city council action policy. I could have told you that without hiring a consultant. I am surprised about new businesses and developments. I thought people would be a little more interested in that. So that's also been kind of, that was a little bit of an eye-opener.
I think there are dedicated groups, and, for example, Eat to LA and SGV Eats on Facebook that focuses on youth businesses and developments. So they're not looking to the city government for that source of news, would be my, my interpretation from that.
Okay. Great. Well, we also have our economic development team that has that bulletin, which is, I think, very helpful, just making sure people look at it. Okay, well, thank you. Great job. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Chan.
Just, thank you. Very well-done survey and presentation, but I just, my feelings are still hurt that our city council is, is number five.
I should have blurted it out. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I don't have any real comments, other than it was well-presented. I appreciate the effort. I know it's a long time coming for this information, and I really hope that we can repeat it every few years or so and just keep it fresh. So thank you for your effort and thank the staff, everyone involved.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. Oh, you've come, John?
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for the great job, Clara. And I just wanted to give you some feedback from our business communities that some business owner, they, they really appreciate, they, they don't really, they don't subscribe our newsletter. They don't really read the WeChat, but they do see the World Journal and all the Chinese media. They, they receive the news about renewed, the business license renewal. So they, they won't miss that, the deadline. So that is something they, they just clearly tell me that they, they love to receive those kind of news updates from our city, but that mainly from the newspaper. And thank you so much for always making the Facebook, you know, it's really enjoy for our audience to read, especially the food, new restaurants. But how many subscribers of our CDB? Because that comes with some very good information.
Great question, Vice Mayor. We have currently, for City Beat, we have just over two thousand subscribers, and that's our e-newsletter. On Facebook, we have six thousand, a hundred followers. Instagram, five hundred, four hundred, five thousand, four hundred followers. On WeChat, we have one thousand, three hundred and four. And then supplement by that is our media outreach, which is how the business license information got posted in World Journal and Yahoo News.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Clara.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank Clara to the survey, yeah, Teresa, to know what's the information they were from. Like, so did you do the survey also include, like, because you say Facebook, you have five thousand or six thousand, right? So how many there are San Gabriel residents and, and all their business? So did you have this kind of question for them, too?
Yeah. So just to make sure I'm understanding your questions. You're asking if I can tell how, how many people who answered our survey on Facebook is from San Gabriel or not?
Yes.
The short answer is no. They don't, when they, when they take our survey, it's anonymous, so we don't get to see that. And we don't have restrictions on our Facebook page that it's only open to San Gabriel residents.
So we don't have this question asking them, too?
Correct.
Okay. Maybe, maybe for the future, maybe we can add on that, too, that's help us, too, you know? So another, I suggesting even, like, this once, once a while, like, officially suggest a survey, but maybe on a newsletter, I think is still always, Facebook is still consistent to have to, if people want a response, they, they love to have some comments, or they want to do the survey, say, hey, I like it, received something, still same question, can consistent to do this kind of, just real-time survey, you know? So maybe can reflect us to, it's a real-time reaction, so, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So on social media, our inboxes are always open for comments and, and questions, and we continuously get them on a daily basis. So we do handle requests and any complaints, and sometimes we get kudos, so we'll take those, too.
All right, okay. All right, that's good. So maybe for the, maybe for our city council, maybe you have the, like, quarterly or semi-annually can let us know, so we can, we can listen to their voice to help them this, like, question to, to solve, you know?
Sure. Yeah, we usually mostly route them through the department so that city staff would handle most of those service questions.
Okay.
A lot of them is, you know, what are your opening hours? And we'd like to see more lights on the streets, sidewalk repairs, where do I file a complaint? So we do handle all those. If you'd like to see them, we can. And then we can do highlights as to what those comments and questions are.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your report. Thank you, Mayor.
One more question, Clara. So on our YouTube, how many subscribers do we have on our YouTube?
That's the one I didn't pull.
I guess I can look it up. I just want to make sure Councilmember Chan feels good, because we actually have quite a few. I just can't remember. I think it's over a thousand.
Correct.
But, but people are watching our meetings, not all thousand, but at least we have a really good subscriber number. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. We're going to start. Assistant City Clerk Bonus is going to read the comments that were submitted via the city website.
The first, the first comment is from Cheryl Cabot. It says, do not support. She is a resident, and it reads as follows. Mayor and council members, this is, this comment is in response to the letter published on social media by the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. San Gabriel Chamber rescinds membership offer a few months ago in an effort to bolster their flagging funds. The San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce, in all their... In all their largess, offered the city Presidential Circle membership for a fee of twenty-three thousand. The special membership was only offered to the City of San Gabriel. Unfortunately, the twenty-three thousand dollar membership did not come with any additional benefits. When this offer was presented to the city council, it was taken under consideration with the chamber sign a contract and have a complete audit done by third party. No contract, no audit, no money. Their ploy to disguise an outright money grab from the city as a membership backfired. Unwilling to sign a contract or open their books, they couldn't receive the money. Now, the chamber has published an open letter stating that we have made the decision to rescind our offer to the City of San Gabriel of a Presidential Circle membership in the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. How disappointing. Once again, the chamber is tossing together a word salad to make it sound like they are making a serious attempt to improve their law. Our chamber will be reevaluating and restructuring some of our memberships, including municipality memberships. Is a municipality membership the new Presidential Circle membership? The chamber so generously offered to the city. How much will this newly minted membership cost? Once we have completed the restructuring of our municipality memberships, we can possibly have a new dialogue with the San Gabriel City Council, possibly, but the same rules still apply. No contract, no audit, no money. The next comment is from Sonia, and it's regarding the San Gabriel Chamber of Commerce. She is a non-resident, and it reads as follows. Good evening, city council and city manager. I would like to follow up on the San Gabriel Chamber issue. On December seventh, the San Gabriel Chamber released a public statement on their Facebook page giving an update on the Presidential Circle membership that the chamber was offering to the city. I assume you all received a copy of this letter stating that the chamber was rescinding their offer of a twenty-three thousand dollar Presidential Circle membership because the chamber is going to focus on restructuring their membership options and will focus on municipality memberships, meaning they will be asking cities to invest in the chamber. One thing that I would like to note in the statement is they claim to be proud of the fact that the chamber would never close during COVID. They say, they said they never closed at all. Weren't all businesses mandated to close? That statement only makes me think an audit is really needed to find out how the chamber was able to stay open when so many other businesses were forced to close some permanently. Many businesses had to make hard decisions by cutting costs, lay off staff, cut pay. Did the chamber do the same or continue as usual? And maybe that is why it shows they are seventy-eight K in red. I would like to share the comment I made to their Facebook post on their public statement they made about rescinding the offer. I don't know who is advising the chamber, but clearly they're, they are sending the chamber down further with this municipality membership idea. Your number one job right now is to be making sure the City of San Gabriel Chamber members feel confident in the leadership and new board. The new board and the mayor just want everyone to ignore the issues that the old board called into light. You must address those issues before anything else and stop calling those who want answers attackers. It is absurd to think that any other city would buy into the chamber at this point, especially when the City of San Gabriel is currently a member. There is no greater outreach than having the chamber's own city as a partner. Repair the relationship first before asking the cities to join. Whatever you have to do is what you should do. An audit is a good start, and just face with what it shows. A good business person has to face the bad judgment calls and learn from them, not to try and cover them and push forward, making the same mistakes. I will make it a point to let Arcadia City Council know about this, so that if you come asking for their membership, they will have context and information to make an informed decision on becoming a member of your chamber. Be prepared that I will ask Paul Chang to answer why he isn't insisting on an audit. Be prepared that I will ask Paul Chang to answer why he isn't insisting on an audit and allowed excellent board meetings to resign. As a public servant, he should know that everything he does is subject to public scrutiny. The next comment is in regards to community safety from Cynthia Talavera, a resident. And it reads as follows. I would like to make the council aware of a traumatic incident that occurred in my neighborhood last Saturday at 5:00 PM. Two loose huskies attacked and seriously injured my neighbor's small dog Sophie while out walking. They also viciously attacked and seriously injured another dog fifteen minutes earlier. A big dog was also attacked. San Gabriel Police Department was called and had the dogs taken to the shelter. The very next day, my neighbors and I were appalled to learn that the shelter released these two dogs to the new, to the owner. They had been turned to the SG Shelter only three weeks ago by another neighbor. At that time, they were wearing shock collars, which sends up red flags to dogs owners that these two dogs should be neglected or abused, could be neglected or abused. At the very least, the shelter should have done some investigating or held the dogs for, for the appropriate agency to handle it, since the second turn-in also had a police report of a vicious attack. The police officer turning in the dogs cited low kill policy of the shelter. Yet they recently euthanized several dogs, including two very beloved long-term residents, Donatella and Bartok. We weren't necessarily asking for the attacked dogs to be euthanized, just some action taken for our safety. We are in fear that these dogs will break loose again, and we don't want any other dog to suffer. Also, there is danger of injury to owners and families trying to protect their dogs. I bring this to your attention because when I called the police department, they told me that the shelter is contracted by the city to handle these situations. I don't believe the shelter exhibited due diligence in handling this matter, and I am hoping that the council can investigate to make sure the shelter is fulfilling their contract of four hundred and forty thousand paid to them annually.
Mr. Mayor, I have one speaker card for an in-person speaker, and that is Andrew.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Uh, I'm Andrew, longtime resident of San Gabriel. Uh, I wanted to speak to today about the militarization of law enforcement in our country, specifically our city. If you recall back in July, I know Eric, uh, Karina was sitting in Eric's spot back then. Chief Harrington, uh, Chief, Chief, Chief Harris presented, um, the, the policy to the, to the city council. When he presented it, uh, you know, for AB four eighty-one, he, uh, he presented it. It was two, over two months late, two and a half months late from the required date by the law. Um, and the city council approved Lexible Policy seven oh seven. Um, I'd like to see if we could change the wording in that policy, because the wording in that policy, when it, when it describes military equipment, what it states is, uh, military equipment includes, but is not limited to the following. And then it gives those sixteen bullet points. Where the actual law just states military equipment means the following, and it gives those, those sixteen bullet points. So it doesn't say not limited to. So I think we should change the policy to reflect the actual law, because policy in court doesn't mean anything. We're going to go to court over law, right? Uh, the other thing that I want to speak to on this is, um, in our arsenal, we have tear gas. We have two, uh, two types of munition that is tear gas. Tear gas is considered a, a, a chemical weapon for military warfare. It is, it is outlawed under the, uh, the, uh, international law. It was outlawed in nineteen twenty-five Geneva Protocol and the nineteen ninety-three Chemical Weapons Convention. The chemicals in the, the, the ones that we have in our arsenal can cause cancer. They can cause reproductive harm in women, and they can also cause birth defects. Uh, I think that we should try to be proactive in this city to remove those from the arsenal and add something that, that could be used, because in this, this country, you know, violating international law when it comes to warfare, they've been doing it since the day I was born. I was sixty-seven a few weeks ago. And, you know, this has been going on for too long. We, we shouldn't have that in our city. Uh, we shouldn't even allow it from mutual aid that comes into our city to help us in, in events that, you know, the law enforcement can't handle. Uh, I think it's very dangerous. It's a matter of public safety. And when the report, which is now eight months due, the annual report for this AB four eighty-one is due, I think we should have the discussion about how we can go about finding an alternative, because there are states in this country that don't allow that type of, uh, equipment to be used. You know, we do have, uh, we have pepper spray. We have the pepper balls, which is similar in the use that we use, um, um, the, um, the tear gas. Where tear gas is being, you know, it's, it's toxic. It's a, it's a, it, it'll, it'll violate your respiratory, whereas, whereas, you know, the, the pepper spray and what have you, that's just an irritant, and it's not really toxic, and it doesn't have the effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the audience that would like to address council? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public request separate discussion. Mr. Mayor, we have requests, uh, requests from the public to pull item B for separate discussion. Also, we have received comments on item four D. In addition, we have an in-person speaker on item four G.
Thank you. So we will pull those two items. You want to, council prefer to hear the items first, or do you want to, sorry, vote on everything all at once after your items, or vote on everything that wasn't pulled? What's the preference? Okay, so we'll wait, we'll hear comments. So let's go with item four D first, please.
Okay. Uh, our assistant city clerk will read the comments that were submitted, submitted via the website.
The first comment is in support of item four D from Alfred Lin, and it reads as follows. Now that one of the tennis court at Smith Park is going to be converted to four permanent pickleball courts, please make the tennis-only courts with the pickleball lines tennis priority. Please have the signs say pickleball okay, but play must stop as soon as two or more tennis players are waiting to avoid future confusion or altercations. The next comment is from Ken. It's do not support item four D. He is a resident, and it reads as follows. Currently, pickleball has four courts and only one tennis court. And the city, San Gabriel, not enough public tennis courts provide to residents. The next public comment is from Tong Fan, and it's do not support item four D. He is a resident, and it reads as follows. To avoid altercation between tennis players and pickleball players, city must reserve at least one court solely for tennis. No mixing line for tennis and for pickleball. The next comment is from Jim Liao, and it's in regards to item four D. It reads as follows. Please make the only tennis court with pickleball lines. Tennis priority with a sign, pickleball okay, but play must stop as soon as two or more tennis players are waiting to avoid future confusion or altercation. The next comment is from Vicki Hung, and it's do not, it's not in support of item D. She is a resident, and it reads as follows. I'm against adding pickleball court lines to the west court at Smith Park. As a resident of San Gabriel City and avid tennis player, we are already losing one of the tennis courts. On top of that, it is difficult to see the tennis court lines when the pickleball lines are in, are there. It makes it confusing for the tennis players to play. Please do not paint the lines on the west court that are reserved for tennis. Please only paint lines on the east court. Thank you. The next public comment is in support of item four D from Glenn Ward, who is a resident, and it reads as follows. Please make the only tennis court with pickleball lines tennis priority with signs that read pickleball okay, but play must stop when two or more tennis players are waiting. This will avoid confusion and the possibility of an altercation. The next public comment is from Lee Ken Tang. It is from a non-resident, and it reads as follows. Totally disagree to convert the current remaining tennis court to permanent pickleball court. This will create more noise to surrounding residents. Both tennis players and pickleball players have equal right to have their own courts. Tennis players already lost one court. Now they take the only remaining one is a total discrimination to tennis players. Besides, most pickleball players are non-residents. Please, no more fun to waste, just create future conflicts between players. The next comment is in support of item four D, and it reads as follows. It's from Bruce Ward, who is a resident. Please make the only tennis court with pickleball lines tennis priority with signs that read pickleball okay to play. Play must stop when two or more tennis players are waiting. This will avoid confusion and the possibility of an altercation. The next comment is from Kelly Hung, and it's not in support of item D. She is a resident, and it reads as follows. I am against painting pickleball lines on the west court. It is impossible to see already with the temporarily line, temporary lines. Tennis players are already complaining due to the temporary lines. The permanent lines would make it even harder to see where the lines are. I plead to the city council to vote against painting lines on the west tennis courts. Keep it on the east court only. The next comment is from Wing Ping Chen, item four D. It's not in support of item four D, who is a resident, and it reads as follows. Please make the only tennis court. The next item, or the next comment is from Scott Yay, and it's in support of four D. It reads as follows. Please make the only tennis court with pickleball lines tennis priority with signs saying pickleball okay, but play must stop as soon as two or more tennis players are waiting to avoid future confusion or altercation. The next one is Dennis Sam. He's in support of item D, and it reads as follows. Dear city council members and staff, the pickleball community is anxiously waiting for your continued support and approval of staff's recommendation for the increased budget to implement the installation of permanent pickleball courts. The next item, or the next comment is from, Andre Sam, in regards to item D, and it reads as follows. Please approve the tennis, please approve the additional funding to install permanent pickleball courts and make the remaining court into a mixed-use pickleball slash tennis use to meet the demands of pickleball players. We are anxiously waiting for the execution of this plan, which was approved in October. Thank you. The next speaker is Johnny Lau, in support of item D, and it reads as follows. Dear council members, I play pickleball at Smith Park regularly, and it is about time that San Gabriel has permanent pickleball courts to meet the high demands of pickleball players. Also, we need to turn the other court into tennis pickleball, because there's very little use. Thank you. Oh, for tennis. Please approve the additional fundings requested by staff so that we can take this plan into reality. We have been waiting too long already. The next comment is from Mateko Orozco, and it's in support of item D, and it reads as follows. Hello, I recently found a new interest in pickleball and started playing at Smith Park in the morning. I see it as very inconvenient to put up and take down each, take down the net each time we play. Also, some of us don't have nets when it's full on the east side tennis court. For tennis, we approve the additional fundings requested by staff so we can make this plan into reality. We have been waiting too long already. Thank you. The next comment is from Mitch Borgson, in support of item D, and it reads as follows. I strongly support the funding, the Smith Park tennis court conversion to pickleball courts. It is right decision for many reasons I have stated previously, but in addition, the repair and improvement of courts is long overdue as the current state of playing surface of, for tennis or pickleball at Smith Park is suboptimal with bare spots and is potentially dangerous. The next comment is from an anonymous submitter, and it reads as follows. Please keep at least one complete court for tennis and no pickleball line on the floor. We also have another anonymous submitter, and it says, please keep at least one tennis court for tennis only. Pickleball players can't play on this court. We have another comment from Frank New. He is a resident, a tennis player, and it reads as follows. Please give tennis priority on Court A West. And the last comment we have is from Paul Lee, support of item four D, and reads as follows. I support the pickleball project, except additional pickleball play lines on the west court. I play both pickleball and tennis. Playing tennis on the court with pickleball lines is not a pleasant experience, vice versa. I suggest keeping east court pure pickleball and west court pure tennis. There are very few tennis courts in San Gabriel City already. Let's compare with nearby city. Farnsworth Park in Altadena has four pickleball courts and one tennis court. Garvey Park in Rosemead has four pickleball courts and four tennis courts. And these two parks have more parking spaces than Smith Park. The only park nearby has more than four pickleball courts is Arcadia Park in Arcadia, which has ten tennis courts with much more parking spaces. Four pickleball courts versus one tennis court is a perfect combination for Smith Park's size and parking. Please keep pickleball and tennis courts simple at Smith Park. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's all the comments for four D.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to address council? Looks like we do.
Good evening, Mayor Harrington, Vice Mayor Wu, Councilwoman Mencaca, Councilman Chan, and Councilman Ding, and our city manager and staff. I'm here again. Yesterday at Smith Park Pickleball, I was late, about nine thirty. And there were forty players, pickleball players, remaining, most who stayed till noon when the nets are removed. I believe there had been two tennis players up until nine o'clock, that's what I was told. And then they set up pickleball nets on the tennis court. Because there were so many people waiting, I approached a couple to say hi, and I discovered they are my neighbors from one block away. They live with their two young children, less than a block from my home, on a cross street. I also met the husband's parents, who are avid players, visiting from Oregon during the holidays. the holidays. This is the fourth neighbor that I have met from one block away at Smith Park. Why is this notable? Because it's a clear example of how to form and grow a vibrant community in our city. We're friendly, we're welcoming, and we coalesce around a shared interest. That's how we build a community. We are proud to be able to bring neighbors, their family, and their friends together, who like me, enjoy exercise in a fun sport called pickleball. I mention the number of players because that's why we need those lines on the second court. At night, we have more than fifty players on a regular basis. So this is a community that needs some accommodation. On behalf of the one hundred and twenty-plus, because I stopped counting, city residents who play pickleball at Smith, some who met the council members who graciously came and visited the courts, and on behalf of their family and friends, please know that every one of us appreciates your recognition of our sport and are grateful for your support and for the approval of facilities that allow our pickleball community to thrive and grow in a healthy, physically and mentally healthy way. This is the environment that we look for in a city, our city of San Gabriel. We ask and we thank you for approving the funds to complete installation of the four permanent pickleball courts on the East Court and the additional pickleball play lines on the West Court of Smith. We wish you peace and joy during this holiday season and a very prosperous new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience like to address council on this issue? Seeing none, we'll go to item G.
Speaker is Andrew.
Good evening again, council. What I wanted to speak to on item B is the funds that are used to pay for employees of the city to, to be members of various associations and, and various conferences that they may go to. I, I spoke to this in the past and it just keeps coming to mind. And I'll just bring some examples and I'll use our, our city manager. He is part of the International Cities Managers Association. We pay his membership fee, it's $1,200. He, he recently attended a, a conference and we spent $1,730 for that. And we, we spent, we spent two, $2,250 for our police chief to, to, to go to a police chief, the IACA Conference Expo recently. And also, we're spending money for him to be part of the Police Officers or the Police Chiefs Association here in the County of Los Angeles. And then we also spent some money on other issues. I know we, we, we spent $900 for John Wu to be a member of the Lions Club. I know he, he recently went to a conference, we recently went to a conference, I think up in Northern California. I had the opportunity to speak to him at the last city council meeting about the conference. And so the reason I'm just bringing this up and, and there's a lot of these that we spend, right? We spent, I think Wills Group went to a conference for the Society of, of Financial Officers or something like that, right? And what I would like to advocate for is, and I pulled the item so that maybe you could, you guys can discuss, it is, I would like to see some kind of presentation for this, you know, like a return on our investment kind of thing, to present us what, what is, what is the benefit for, for these conferences or these memberships? And I'll just give an example. Like we, we, we pay for Ms. Sharon, our, our Chief City Clerk to be part of a, a society of municipal city clerks. Earlier this year, she gave a wonderful presentation about her job, right, to the city. And, and then I'll use Denise Menchaca as an example. She is, she is our representative for the, the mosquito vector district or whatever. We, we paid her $20 in travel fee to go to the meetings. And earlier this summer, she gave a, a wonderful presentation about the issue we were having with mosquitoes and, and specifically, there was a community that had a, a bird bath that was, that they, they discovered that had a bunch of mosquitoes in there. So it's something like that, if, if we could get something like that so we could kind of understand what we're spending our money in. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any, anyone else in the audience like to address council on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, he also wanted to speak on item 4G.
Oh, G as well, okay. I thought that was, I thought it was B and G.
I don't need three minutes for this one. So item G is money that we're getting from a grant fund, right? It's a grant that is going to be used for the development of our, it's going to be nonprofit, or actually, low-income, I think, senior living that we're planning on building on Del Mar, correct? Is that what, that's what G is about? Yeah. So the thing about this is, most people don't even know about this project. So I was just wondering if we could get maybe our, our Community Development Director to at some point maybe give us a presentation on what the plan is for this project? Because most people, when I talk about it, they're just like, where are you talking about? And I always say, you know, over the tracks from the Asian Youth Center, you know, and they're like, really? Nobody knows about this project. I just happened to come across it a couple of years ago. There was something I read about it, but I don't think people know about this. And I just think it would be nice for the community to know that we're focusing on trying to help our low-income and senior citizens or residents of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you don't mind, I'll just give a couple of sentences on some of the public comment we've received. Starting first with a question on the material demands. We have information in our budget related to citywide, what we spend on conferences and meetings. And I think the council does a phenomenal job and the, the department directors do as well of reporting when they go to conferences and what that brings to the city. So I'll leave it up to the council if they want to change our policy and the way that we do that. As far as the pickleball, there was several comments, as you all heard. One of the common themes was providing some sort of a preference to tennis players on that one court that's going to have a combination tennis and pickleball lines. And Director Perez and I are meeting later this week with the school district to talk about further joint uses of courts potentially in the city on school facilities as well as a couple of other things that we have in the, in the hopper with the school district. And one of our suggestions will be to have a tennis preference at Smith Park on that court during school hours because at that point, during school hours, there aren't any tennis courts for tennis players to play on in the city. But once school hours are over in the evenings at our lighted courts, for sure on Jeffers, I'm sorry, for sure on Washington and Roosevelt, there are four courts available for tennis players. And then we're talking about other opportunities with the school district, so there may be even more. So staff's proposal is going to be to have that preference for tennis players basically from school hours in the school year and then the rest of the year tennis players can play at our other courts. And then finally, on the housing project on Del Mar, the speaker is correct, we haven't had a lot of information on that because heretofore, those conversations have been in closed session because we've been talking about the purchase of those sites, or that site, excuse me. But we are working with a related company on a development proposal that will be coming to the Planning Commission probably in March. But I'd like to have our Director of Community Development give a presentation to the community before that with the related company because we are going to be starting to have those conversations and the neighborhood will start to get notices. And we talked early on with this project that we would involve the community and make sure that that housing project fits within what our community is expecting. So the short answer on that one is, we'd be happy to do a presentation and, and do that before it's officially submitted.
Thank you, Mark. I will now entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items, A through, was it G?
Second. Thank you, motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you, next item, please.
Public hearing, item A, Resolution Number 23-72, Fiscal Year 2024 to 25, Community Development Block Grant Programs Budget and Allocation.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Economic Development Manager Caroline Vervardi will make the staff presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Before you this evening is the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG Program Plan and Budget for Fiscal Year 24-25. As you may know, the city receives federal CDBG funding administered by the Los Angeles County Development Housing Authority, also known as LACTA. These funds are used to meet national objectives to develop viable communities and serve low to moderate income populations in our city. There's also a 20% cap of funds used for public services. Examples of public services include childcare, recreation programs, public safety services, as well as senior services. This table shows the allocations for the current year and 24-25, as well as the 2% decrease that we generally get every year in the proposed budget. So as you know, each year, the council must approve these amounts for the fiscal year's budget plan and programs. So this is a customary administrative procedure that we do annually. These are the four programs that our city funds with CDBG. There's code enforcement, there's youth services programming for students in the district, the street improvement project, which includes a variety of work on those streets listed there, including slurry seals, new asphalt and paving, and the graffiti removal program implemented by our NIS staff. As in previous years, the city may receive an additional amount of funds from the LA County First District Supervisor. This is estimated to be $20,630 for the after-school program. That County Board of Supervisors meeting is set to take place in the spring, during which those allocations will be announced. So staff recommends that the city council approve this budget and plan with the following actions. One, adopt Resolution 23-72 to be adopted, authorizing the allocation of these funds for 24-25 for the activities and programs mentioned this evening. Two, carry over the CDBG funds unspent at the close of this fiscal year and recognize the receipt of 24-25 funds in the city's 24-25 budget. Three, recognize the receipt of an, an estimated $20,630 from the supervisor's office and if approved, allocate them for the after-school program. Four, allocate any 24-25 funds in excess of the estimated funding to the programs discussed tonight. And finally, authorize the city manager to execute new contracts with LACTA for the allocation of these funds and adjust as necessary to reflect the actual allocation to the city. This concludes my report and presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. Do any council members have technical or factual questions? Caroline? Vice Mayor Wu?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, Caroline. Regarding the funds located for the Neighborhood Improvement Survey, which is an NIS, the staff under the code enforcement, which is, which is the primary use for the CDBG funds at $85,000? So could you provide more specifically, I mean, about whether the funds are designated for salaries, equipment, or other purpose? Because I understand that there are only two staff members in the NIS department and making it sometimes challenged to fully complete the code enforcement task due to the shortage of staff.
I believe the CDBG funding for NIS or code enforcement is used for salaries.
So that is for salary?
But I, yes, yes, it's for staff salaries.
I see. And that is same as last year, $85,000?
Yes.
I see. So we still have two people?
Correct, yes.
Got it. And so concerning the, the funds are located for the street improvement projects, including the use of, of staff and consultant in the Public Works Department. The staff report that indicates that the current 23 to 24 fiscal year street improvement project has been extended until June 30th, 2025. So incorporate fiscal year of 2024 to 2025 funding and propose the location for the, the CDBG improvement projects newly added to the street pavement plan that you just have that, several streets. I, I wondered, whether those streets already a part of the plan and the funds enable us to enhance street maintenance? Because I understand this is not a significant amount.
I'm not sure where Public Works is in, in terms of their work plan in completing these, but I do know as far as the funding goes, it is carried over into the next year simply because these are such big projects and they're very expensive. So to your point, it is very little to work with, hence why the funding gets carried over to the next year. But as far as work plan, I can confirm with Public Works where they are.
And Vice Mayor Wu, I'd be happy to elaborate that on a bit. Our Public Works Director Greg has got the bug that pretty much everybody else has in our city right now. And so unfortunately, he's not able to join us tonight. But we do have the work planned, the streets that are intended to be used for paving for the CDBG funding are listed in the staff report. It's not staff time per se to do pothole filling or, or that kind of thing. It's all street paving projects. And we do, as, as Caroline said, we do save those funds up for two years because we're only able to use these funds in the CDBG designated areas. It requires a heck of a lot more reporting by the contractors and so the projects are more expensive on a per lane mile basis than our normal projects. So we group those together to try to get a bit of an economy of scale and we end up usually doing two years at once. And then just to follow up on the code enforcement question, Caroline is correct that we use that for salaries. I should let the council and the community know that our staff keeps track of the cases that they deal with in those areas that are low and moderate income. And we only charge salaries for the proportion of time they're in those areas. So whether we're fully staffed or partially staffed, we have to allocate it according to the cases that we have and, and the work that we do in those areas.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Caroline.
Any further questions, clarifications? All right. Seeing, seeing none, I will open for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I have no speaker cards.
Looks like we have one member of public that'd like to comment.
I have a question. It brought up the low and moderate income. What is that number? Because it's, I've looked it up because we're going to be talking about a development here in a bit and there's going to be some low and moderate income housing element there. So I'm just kind of curious because I know it, I, I read something in the, you know, the housing elements talks about, you know, your, you know, it's a percentage of your, of your median income. You know, moderate being like, I believe it, it stated 80 to 120% of your, of your median income in the, in your community and then kind of just goes down from there to low and then very low and then extremely low. So what, what do we, what do we look at as low income and moderate income for the city of San Gabriel?
So I know that's determined not by San Gabriel, but it's determined by a federal... So I know that's determined not by San Gabriel, but it's determined by a federal survey, and I think Mark has a chart. Staff uses a chart for that.
But, but isn't it determined by the median income of your community?
By the community, correct. And we don't determine that it's done by the, I believe, federal government, correct?
Yeah, because I kind of wrote it, I actually wrote it down, and it showed like, moderate being eighty to a hundred and twenty percent, low income being fifty to eighty percent, and then very low, thirty to fifty percent, and then extremely is fifteen to thirty, and then just broke zero to fifteen.
So Mayor Harrington's a hundred percent correct. I would encourage anybody to go onto the HUD website and the census website. You can do the deepest dive you've ever wanted, and you can learn down to the block group, which is smaller than a census tract, down to the block group, what a income level is for the residents in that area. But Mayor Harrington's correct, it's set by what they call statistical median areas, which are geographic areas that are bigger than a city. Short answer is for Los Angeles County, right now, the moderate income level for a family of four, it's based on, on the family size, so a, a person who's single can earn less than a, a family of four in order to qualify as moderate income or low income. Median income in this county of Los Angeles right now is about ninety-eight thousand two hundred. So anybody who has a family of four that is earning ninety-eight thousand two hundred dollars or less would be considered median income. As you mentioned, Andrew, for projects that are low income, it's eighty percent of that number, and it's a simple math, I'm sorry, it is not a simple math. For high-priced counties like Los Angeles, they actually have a factor on that because of the high cost of living. It doesn't make sense when I explain this to you, but, and not, not just to you, but to the, to the public, ninety-eight thousand dollars is the income level for a family of four, but for low income, it's actually a hundred thousand dollars or less, and for moderate income, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand. Long story short, it's not set by the city, it's not just San Gabriel, it's for all of LA County. And when we do any projects, whether it's CDBG, or whether it's the project that we're going to talk about at the end of the night, or the project you brought up, we use those income limits, and developers or tenants have to use those same. CDBG, section eight, is a, a program that people hear about, they use those same income limits, and that's how that's all figured out.
So, so, so we're, we're in the county, right?
We're the county. It's not San Gabriel, we don't figure that out for ourselves, it's for all of LA County.
Thank you, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that'd like to address counsel on this? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And I will also close the public hearing. It's time for council deliberation and discussion. Is anyone like to start or have comments? Councilor Minchaca?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to just say that I, I know with CDBG, the compliance is extreme. I'm involved with a nonprofit, a local nonprofit, and it's amazing what you have to go through. Doesn't matter if it's a thousand or a hundred thousand, very strict compliance issues. Under page three, where you have the budget plan, and you have the numbers there, code enforcement, eighty-five thousand, youth services, thirty-four thousand, graffiti, twenty-four, and of course, street improvements, but I just wanted to clarify, this is just a part of the budget? Or is this, like, for example, graffiti removal program, twenty-four thousand? We are also using other funding for graffiti removal, or is it just twenty-four thousand that we're using?
Well, this is just for the CDBG funding source.
Exactly, okay.
For the year.
I, I think it gets a little confusing, because it seems like
It's small.
This is it.
Right.
And, I mean, street improvements, I think, is pretty obvious, but everything else, you know, we, this is just, like, everything else we do, we cobble
Yes.
Things together, and we get to that final number, taking as little as we can from the general fund and trying to use that. Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
And these amounts are provided to us by LACTA, who administers the, the CDBG funds on behalf of HUD.
Yeah, there's always an agency involved, so, learning that. The other comment I was going to make is kind of relating to the public comment that was made previously from our favorite person, Andrew. You know, there is, I, I agree with regards to the fact that we don't seem to share with the community on a timely basis. So, you know, for example, these streets are key for our community, you know? Anytime I'm down there, street improvement is a major issue. Our public works has made, you know, leaps and bounds progress, but I just want to make sure that we, we let our community know on a more timely basis, you know? These streets, I hope we can show that we're, we're making an investment, that they're coming. I know that public works has the GES or GIS, some kind of program, but it's really hard for people to access. And so I hope we, we, we show that, you know, especially people who live on those streets, street repairs are coming, and so I'm hoping we can publicize it. Just like that project on Del Mar, I mean, that's been there for such a long time, and for the community. I know, I've asked the same question, I don't even think our planning commissioners even know about it. I know we're waiting for everything, you know, to, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is, but sometimes we just need to at least share something with the community, you know? There's a piece of property there that's been there probably five years now, and not to have any kind of communication, to me, I think is wrong. Just something, you know, we're working on it, it's going to be some type of housing. I, I think we're coming to the conclusion it's senior housing, but it could change because we're going to have outreach with the community. So I'd like to see more of that, whether it's CDBG or it's property on Main Street. I think it's important, because then it's just such a big mystery, and five years is a long time. I mean, this is every year, but just in general, I would just like to see better communication. Thank you. And I'm ready to, to move if there's no other questions.
Councilor Enchan.
Real quick, sort of just from my understanding, in the presentation you had gave, it was very good, thank you, by the way, but just from my understanding, page three, when you have that proposed fiscal year twenty-two forty-four, twenty-five allocation column, so what you're saying is that we get the two-hundred-ninety-three-thousand-zero-thirty-two, well, ultimately from HUD, but then it gets administered and distributed through LACTA?
Yes.
It goes to us? And then the, the breakdown between code enforcement and youth services, that's an internal thing, but with our finance department, is that correct? Or does LACTA tell us what we can use?
We submit our projects on an annual basis, which hasn't changed for us through multiple previous years, and
Okay.
These have been the amounts historically, I'm, I'm not sure quite how they were established, but they are determined by, we get the amounts, and then we have to approve them as we're doing this evening through our process, but these amounts are determined to us by LACTA.
Oh, okay. So that's not the internal department saying, my department needs eighty-five thousand, and then?
We can actually set the, how we use the funds within broad parameters. As Caroline mentioned, there are limits that the county sets on us for what they call public social service programs.
Okay.
And then, other than those programs, we have some, a little bit broader flexibility. So for example, for code enforcement and graffiti control, those are areas that are allowed to be spent, and so it saves the general fund money when we're doing those services in those low-income areas. If council decided they wanted to spend the money differently, we have some flexibility with these funds, but we would have to backfill these amounts with the general fund. And so it's, in the past, been trying to provide those services at the least cost of the general fund while still providing those services.
Right. Oh, okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. That's all I have.
Councilor Ding.
Thank you, mayor. So first of all, to clarify this question, when I got on board, it's have the pandemic, we, CDBG fund have extra money from the federal. I think at that time, it's a huge amount, it's almost, almost ninety, nine-hundred thousand, right, from what I remember. So this is already gone, no more, right? This is, right now, talking about it, two-hundred-ninety-three, it's regularly keep going, the fund from the federal
Yes.
To assist in the low income and the moderate income.
Yes.
And the, today, the proposal, it's also this CDBG fund, I remember, it's a requirement you have to submit a discount report, how can we use the CDBG fund? Is that correct?
Sorry, can you ask your question again?
So, so for the, for the disresolution, it's, it's mandatory, the
Yes.
Report?
Yes.
To report to the CDBG, how can we expand it?
Yes, the, the resolution is the formal action that the city agrees to accept the allocation and will budget for it in our plan.
But CDBG
It's required.
They, they, they require too, they want to see where you've spent the money.
Yes, we, we do, and we do quarterly reporting.
Quarterly reporting?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, so any suggestion the amount is a part of the, the budget? For the code enforcement, it's not just a total amount for the code enforcement salary, right? Just a portion of the salary?
Yes, yes, correct.
And I just want to help the public to clear, to understand it, to, and the use program, same thing, and the street paving, doesn't mean street paving only have a hundred forty-nine thousand, that's just a portion of the
Yes, just a portion.
Total, like you're listing here, is it just a part?
Yes, just a portion of the funds listed here are funding the projects, there are other funding sources.
Okay, yeah, so, but especially for the, this, all of this street, it's like in the geography, it's, it's a low or moderate income, too. Okay, graffiti scene, okay, that's good, thank you. And I just want to clarify, and now, one more thing, it looks like the annual, the fund, it's reduced, do you know the why?
It's been reduced every year by two percent. I think it's just
Okay.
A, a lot of agencies, we're seeing it across the board, it's not just our city, but annually, the fund, the funds allotted to cities are reduced by just a little bit every year.
Because the, our federal government reduced the budget?
I would tie it to that, maybe.
Okay, so, okay, all right. So, yeah, for, for locally, I, we wish to have gotten more from, from the federal too, right? So we should be having some, some voice for the local, you know? So more, more, right now, more expensive everything, right? Paying the street, the cost more, yeah? And, 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 and like code enforcement salary too, you know? Yeah, okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
I believe that's all the questions, anyone else have questions?
I'm ready to move, approval of the recommend, recommendation, staff recommendation?
I'll second.
Do, do I need to read it because of the public hearing, or could I just say? Okay, great.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second, may the second? Oh, Vice Mayor Wu, so we had a motion and a second, so please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
All right, next item, please.
Item B, amendment of an existing planned development overlay zone, development agreement and tentative tract map for two-oh-one to two-seventeen South San Gabriel Boulevard, planning case numbers CC twenty-two dash zero-zero-one and TMAP twenty-two dash zero-one-five. Appellant Everardo Garcia of LCRA.
Thank you, I now open the public hearing. Planning manager Samantha Tousart will make the staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, mayor, and members of the city council, just a quick correction there, Everardo Garcia of LCRA is the applicant, project architect, that is representing the ownership as well as the development team. The, this slide right here represents the project site. It shows that the site has frontage on three streets, including San Gabriel Boulevard, Live Oak and Pine Street. This image helps to show the built environment, the existing uses, this is an infill development. To the west of this project site is Montai Family Residential, as well as to the south, and then also to the south on San Gabriel are commercial properties and developments, and across the street, San Gabriel Boulevard is also commercial. This image also helps to show the way that the project is designed and proposed. What is before the city council this evening is primarily, it impacts the northeast corner of the property where the amendments are taking place, with the other two portions of the site that is bisected by the, by the Alhambra Wash. Those would remain residential use predominantly at the corner, and then at the southern portion, it's a smaller-scale mixed-use, there's commercial there as well as residential, but the project architect will get more into that as part of their presentation. And here, this represents the land use and the zoning that is before the city council this evening. The project site is currently zoned C-one PD retail commercial with the planned development overlay, and this was entitled in two thousand and seven. The boundary lines of the overlay will not be changing as part of the proposal this evening. What the amendment involves would be the development standards, and that is before the city council. So this project site is approximately two-point-eight-nine acres in size. What was shown here, the site was previously developed with a mixture of commercial and single-family uses. In two thousand and nineteen, there was a fire, a demolition permit was issued, so there were structures on-site up until two thousand and nineteen, when the structures on-site were removed. So we get into the project history of this project, we are going into a little bit over fifteen years in history with this project, starting in two thousand and seven, that is when the project was originally entitled, recommended to the city council, starting in March of two thousand and seven, then leading into city council approval in April, and the applications are similar to what is before the city council this evening. However, as part of the two thousand and seven approval, that's when the overlay was originally entitled. There was a subdivision map that was associated with it, it's a very similar mixed-use project, and then going into design review. The following year, the project went before the design review commission to request an extension, a three-year extension, anticipating that the project was going to take a while. Then we go into two thousand and fifteen, so the project, it did lapse because construction did not start. I believe there may have been an ownership change, but again, the applicant team can speak to that a little bit more. And two thousand and fifteen is when the project came back, again, a very similar project to what was entitled in two thousand and seven, and the project came back again because the project had lapsed, but the number of units, the square footage of the project, very similar to the original entitlement. Then, following entitlements, back to planning commission and design review, there was an amendment to the site, as part of that design, there were residential units proposed on top of the wash, and then in working with the Army Corp of Engineers, the project had to be redesigned to relocate those units, but number of units, square footage of the project still remained the same at that time. Then construction drawings were submitted in two thousand and eighteen, and plant check and excavation and shoring permits were issued in two thousand and twenty. And as the project seemed as though it was going to start, then in two thousand and twenty-one, modifications were brought back to the city. It could have been due to the start of just reassessment of the cost of construction. And the project was brought before the planning commission. At that time, the project was to increase the number of units, but this was within the existing footprint of what had already been approved. Essentially, the request was to divide some of the three bedrooms and two-bedroom units to either be studio units or one-bedroom units, and in fact, the overall square footage of the project, the size of the project, was reduced as part of that application, but all of this fit within what was previously analyzed and reviewed by the city. Then following that meeting, the project went before the design review commission with any modifications that were associated with that update. And again, just when staff thought that the project was And again, just when staff thought that the project was moving forward, then we have the current application that is before the City Council this evening. And it is to request the amendment to the development standards. A revised tentative map to reflect the increase in the number of units going from 179 to the 225. And that, and the additional height and number of story that will be presented this evening. So, the items that are, per the City Council's review this evening, would be the general plan, land use and goals, consistency with that, the development standards that are proposed by the applicant team, as well as the architectural design, parking, driveway access, open space areas. What is new is the development agreement because of the proposed amendments this evening, the off-site improvements associated with the project, as well as the additional contributions that is offered by the project, the affordable units, and the economic impacts of this development. And all of this is under the umbrella of the Development Agreement, as well as the planned development overlay. So, just going through the next two slide, this is what's currently approved. The project has approval for it. What is before the Council this evening is something that's very similar. And again, the project architect will speak to that. As well as the elevation, very similar. This is what the project currently has approval for. And this is what is being proposed before the Council this evening. And again, associated with this application, the amendment to the planned development overlay is also the revised tentative map for subdivision purposes. And what is new would be the development agreement that is before the City Council this evening. And the development agreement, it defines the terms, the duration of the agreement. What is proposed by the applicant is for years. It also includes the project description, as well as the development standards, all of the improvements that are associated with the project, as well as any infrastructure improvements and the terms that are associated with the development agreement. And also, going into general plan consistency, again, all the goals identified on the slide right here from land use, supporting infill development, that includes housing to assist the city to meet its regional housing needs assessment numbers, the RINA numbers, as part of this project, not only to meet the market rate units, but also the moderate and the low income. That will be addressed shortly. And then, all of the economic development goals to be met. It is a mixed-use development. It includes a commercial component. So, there will be a commercial use and taxes that come with that type of use. This project includes a large open space area, which helps to fulfill the objective of providing additional open space. Since land is limited in the city, when these larger projects come through, there's strong encouragement to provide additional open space when possible. And then, also, community design and just providing high-quality design that is consistent with the type of designs and projects that are seen throughout San Gabriel. And so, the tentative map findings that is a part of this approval, per the Subdivision Map Act, if staff is unable to make findings for denial. And essentially, those findings is whether or not the project and the map fulfills and meets the objectives of the city's general plan, as well as specific plans. So, that is all a part of the approval that is before the City Council this evening. One item that the applicant did bring up to staff in reviewing the conditions of approval, the applicant requested some clarity. And in working with the Public Works Department and the Engineering Division, specifically, it's Condition Forty-Three, that speaks to covenants, conditions, and restrictions. And the added language is reflected with the underline to add for the maintenance of low-impact development, LID structures and facility. And essentially, these are design features that has to do with stormwater, stormwater management. And that is to be required after the approval of the map. And then, also, that the CCNRs are recorded at the time of building final approval. This is, these types of details are important as the project team is working out their feasibility and in understanding the step-by-steps to getting to the point of construction, what happens during construction and what happens after construction. And so, as part of this project, there's also an environmental review requirement. And the proposed project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act for CEQA. And as required by CEQA, an initial study was prepared for the project. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared. And what that means is if impacts were identified, then mitigations are incorporated or required as part of the project approval in order to reduce those impacts. Ten mitigation measures have been identified, and those have been provided to the City Council as part of the agenda package. Also, this document was circulated for public review within the required time period. Also, a notification of the availability of the document was published, as well as the notification was mailed to property owners and occupants within the 500-foot radius and posted at the, at the public sites. Three comment letters were received, and responses to those comments are also provided as part of the agenda package. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed project at their November thirteenth meeting and agreed to recommend approval to the City Council with a five-zero vote, with an added condition that the original entitled project in 2007 included 12 affordable units. When the project came back, the applicant offered to provide 18 affordable units. And as part of Planning Commission discussion, the Planning Commission asked if the development team would consider increasing the number of units to 22, with the specification that six of the units be low-income. And the applicant team did not disagree with that request. So, that is a part of the Council's consideration this evening. And so, similar to the environmental document, and throughout the public hearing process for this project, notice of this meeting was mailed to property owners, as well as tenants. At this point, cannot tell you the number of notices that those properties have probably received on this project, both from last year going into this year. Again, public notification at all of the public facilities, City Hall, the post office, the library, and also publication in the San Gabriel Sen. So, the recommendation before the City Council this evening is to adopt Resolution Number Twenty-three dash seven-three approving the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, planning case number TMAP twenty-two dash zero one five. And to waive full reading, introduce the ordinance number 700 by title only, waive the future reading, and to schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular City Council meeting. And then, the ordinance would become effective 30 days after. Or alternative options before the City Council would be, if any of the project the Council determines should be denied, then the Council should deliberate and provide the required findings for staff to come back with the denial of resolution. Or the city can discuss and suggest any changes and modifications to the project. And so, with that, that concludes staff's presentation. The city's environmental consulting firm is present this evening to respond to any questions associated with the environmental determination on the project. And then, the project applicant team also has a presentation for the City Council this evening.
Thank you, Samantha. Would Council like to wait for the other presentation? Or have any technical, actual questions for this presentation? Yeah, for Samantha. Okay, let's go ahead.
Well, thank you, Samantha, for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions that I, after I read the staff report. On page nine of the staff report, can you clarify if affordable housing can be insured affordability for a period of 45 years or 55 years?
Yes, Vice Mayor, that would depend. So, as part of this approval, and as part of the condition of approval, an affordable housing agreement would be required to be recorded with the project. And the 45 or the 55 years would be determined on whether the units are going to be rental or for ownership. So, I forget if it's the 45 that applies to rental and the 55 according to ownership. But all of that would be spelled out in the affordable housing agreement for the project.
For project, okay. And there's something about the public arts. So, when did the 1% of construction cost for the public arts take effect in our city?
So, this is unique to this particular application. 1% is specifically defined in the Mission District Specific Plan. Valley Boulevard has it as a recommendation to be consistent with the Mission District Specific Plan. This is a plan development application, so this is a carryover to be consistent with the specific plans. But it's not a requirement.
So, it's not a requirement for this project? Great, okay. And for this, so has the environmental impact report, EIR, been conducted for this project? Because I saw that you have me, you have said they have a certified final EIR. So, has that been conducted?
Yes, so that is associated with the original entitlement. And at that time, that determination was made. It was a more intensive project proposal compared to existing conditions. The project was reevaluated as part of this application. And also, we're looking at a 15-years difference between environmental laws and anything else that has been updated as far as standards, air quality laws. And again, the CEQA consultant can speak in more detail to that. But what has been determined for this project based on the analysis, current analysis under current regulations, and this proposal is the mitigated negative declaration that is before the Council. So, not the EIR, that was 2007. Again, it was carried over in 2015 because, again, it's the same project that was originally entitled and approved. But what is before the City Council this evening is a new and current analysis based on the project that is before the Council.
Got it. And I understand that after remodeling of the projects, that they have downsized a little about their commercial space. So, what is the size allowance for restaurant use that requires a CUP in this project's commercial space?
Restaurant use does not require a CUP.
There's no requirement?
Correct, correct. The only time the Council may come across a CUP for a restaurant is if it's associated with the sale of beer and wine or general liquor sales that's served with, with the food.
Okay, great. Well, I think the last question is, I mean, because this is like from moving from four-story to six stories. So, is there any comments from our fire department? Or what kind of proactive measures the city requires to prevent the fire hazard? With this type of high-rise building?
Yes, any comments would be reflected in the conditions of approval. The project was circulated to all the city departments. And it is included as part of the conditions on pages 65 to 66. So, that is the extent of the comments from the fire department. However, if there's somebody from fire this evening, maybe they can speak to that a little bit further.
Great, thank you. And a lot of things, just corrections. I mean, I know that your, your presentation shows that they have a five-two-zero vote. But I remember the Commissioner Lee was absent, right?
Oh, that's correct, yes, thank you.
So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council members with factual questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I have two speaker cards this evening. The first is Andrew.
Actually, do we, do we want the presentation before you make your comments? Or does it matter to you if we have the presentation from the design team first?
I already know what they're going to say. I saw the Planning Commission meeting back in November.
Gotcha.
So, what I wanted to speak to, just comment on what Vice Mayor Wu mentioned about the environmental impact report, right? This is a 15-year-old environmental impact report. And, you know, even though they came up with some mitigations, they should have came up with a new environmental impact report. So, that wasn't, that wasn't done. And then, as far as the fire issue, you know, not only are we six stories now, right? There's going to be two above-ground stories that'll be parking, and, and along with residential, right? We got these electric car fires that are happening that are just impossible to turn out, right? To turn off. So, I think that's a bigger issue that needs to be addressed. The other, the biggest, the bigger issue too that I have too is that if you look at the setbacks on this new project, on Pine Street, the north-facing wall of the, the structure, which is now six stories, there's zero setback. And, and, you know, it wouldn't be, it would be okay because, you know, right across the street at the market, across the street, they have zero setback on their building, but there's just a wall there. This, this building now is going to have zero setback with, 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 they're going to have balconies. There's quite a few balconies on that wall. So, you know, people are going to be hanging stuff out on the balcony. And now, you're, you're, you know, the, the impact of it falling and hitting somebody on the public sidewalk is there. I think that's a poor design. I don't know why, you know, the design review and planning didn't pick that up because there's zero setback on, on Live Oak and also on Pine Street. And I think that needs to be addressed because that, that was overlooked, I believe, in both commissions there. The other thing that I wanted to address is the, 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 this is going to be rentals. They're going to be rental property. They're not, they're not condos, they're rentals. And, you know, there's, there's, there's going to be, there's, there's 12 studio units. And then, there's going to be 179 one-bedroom units. There's 32, or 31, 31 two-bedroom units and three, three-bedroom units. And the issue is that, you know, this is not family-friendly. You know, you could stick a family, there are families in San Gabriel that are living in one-bedroom units because of the affordability of homes in this community. And that's why I asked the question about affordable housing. What's the mark, right? And I was going by the whole $76,000 as being the median income in San Gabriel. Mark, of course, brought up the point that it's actually $98,000 in this, in this county, which is much higher, right? You know, I would say, I think the last time I looked, you know, about 60% of our community is considered low-income. So, so they're, they're proposing the 22 units. And I believe it was six of them would be low-income, and 16 of them would be moderate income. I think it should be, six of them should be very low-income, and the other 16 should be low-income and no moderate. Because that's not going to fit. It may fit for the county of LA, maybe somewhere in, you know, West LA or something. But for San Gabriel, those numbers don't really fit well, you know, here. So, those are the couple of things that I have that are issues.
The next speaker is Marjana Boobo.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Harrington and honorable council members. My name is Marjana Boobo, and I with Lozo Jury. And I represent Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER for short. SAFER respectfully requests the city not to proceed with approving the MND and to instead require the preparation of an EIR pursuant to CEQA. While SAFER commands the city staff's work on the project, and I truly mean Samantha's presentation was really helpful, we do appeal the Planning Commission's recommendation to proceed with the MND. And with the limited time I have, I'd like to highlight why. So, first, the city's decision to require an EIR for this project in 2007 is contrary to the recommendation to now proceed with an MND. SAFER received the final EIR and addendum last Thursday and had limited time to review it. However, it is worth noting that the 2007 proposal found significant environmental impacts necessitating an EIR, which creates a fair argument that an EIR must be prepared for the project now before the Council, especially considering that the prior iteration of this proposal only sought to develop 159 units. It does not make sense why a 159-unit project then required an EIR, but now a 225-unit project with additional entitlements will not. Secondly, SAFER has submitted substantial information for the record that creates a fair argument that the project will have potentially significant biological resources impacts. This is not surprising, given how in the presentation, the Rubio Wash cuts through the project site, allowing wildlife to inhabit and utilize the project site as valuable habitat. Our independent expert biologist, Dr. Sean Smallwood, has not only provided expert reviews of the site, aided by a site visit, but has rebutted the applicant's allegations regarding biological resources issues. A picture- A picture is worth a thousand words, and the many pictures that SAFER has submitted highlights what is at stake. Last but not least, as it relates to air quality, city cannot defer mitigation measures to a different agency. At the November hearing, the applicant's representative expressed how an EIR was not required because of state regulations that have, quote-unquote, "cleaned up" the fleet of available construction equipment. They also conceded that construction equipment is much cleaner due to state agencies that, again, quote-unquote, "have pushed this as a mitigation measure." However, SEQUA provides that mitigation measures must be fully enforceable through, for example, conditions of approval. And a closer look of the project's MND and the conditions of approval do not guarantee the use of the highest-tier construction equipment, meaning that there is no promise that air quality impacts will fall below significance thresholds for the foregoing reasons, including those outlined in SAFER's previously submitted comment letters. SAFER respectfully requests the city to proceed not with an MND, but to take the adequate steps pursuant to SEQUA to prepare an EIR and to have public critical review of the project. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Then, members of the public that would like to address council? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. And we will have the presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor Harrington and council members. My name's Everardo Garcia, and I'm with LCRA Architects. We're here representing our client on the previously-approved Rubio Village project. And I also want to thank Samantha for the great presentation and giving you some of the history on this project. It's a long history. And we came on board in 2017 on this project. At the same time, ownership changed, so they also became part of that switch-over. We've always been very interested in having this project be developed. We think it'll be a great improvement to the area, provide needed housing. So we're here to present revisions to the amended project. Our client came to us after, really, after our project was approved, realizing that we were still coming out of COVID. You know, finances were changing, the economy was changing. Construction cost is soaring, it's really changing. So it became, it came to a point where the project wasn't feasible the way it was approved and designed. So the client came to us to see if we can, what we can do, what opportunities we had in making it more viable. So we looked at the project, and our main goal was to keep the feel of the original project. I think everyone appreciated the project for what it was and what it would do. And we wanted to keep the original essence of the project, even though we would have to find ways of improving its viability. One of the main ways of making it more viable was to increase the unit count. So we looked at the opportunities we had in the plan and looked at the opportunity of adding the additional 49 units, which takes us from the originally-approved 179 to 225 units. So in this presentation, I wanted to show the major revisions between the originally-approved project and the proposed project. As Samantha mentioned, our project is bordered by San Gabriel, Live Oak, and Pine Street. It's an interesting site. It's bisected by the Rubio Wash. So the main area, kind of a pie-shaped building area, is our building number one. As you can see from the previous and the proposed, the proposed being on the right-hand side, the overall shape of the building remains the same. Building number one, the larger portion, is where most of the changes occurred, and I'll come back to that. If we look at the other side of the Wash facing San Gabriel, that's building number two, which stays the same as originally-approved. It's a four-story building with 16 units, 16 flats. And then the small triangular piece facing Pine Street, it's a three-unit townhome, which also remains the same. So the main changes did occur to the main building. The original building was two levels of underground parking, one level of on-grade parking, and then three stories of residential above. Actually, three, I believe, yes. We originally had units along the Wash and a little on the corner of Live Oak and Pine Street. We had commercial on San Gabriel. On the new project, the San Gabriel side remains relatively the same. We have almost the same amount of commercial space, which I think is very important for San Gabriel, to keep it active and create pedestrian activity. We also still have the plaza over the Wash that is remaining, which creates a great open space, public space for the community. On the ground floor, we did eliminate the units along the Wash. One of the main reasons for that is the other opportunity we found to help this project was to reduce the amount of shoring below for the building. That became a big item in construction. So in order to avoid shoring on the underground parking levels, we ended up reducing the lower levels and increasing the parking above ground. So on this one, you can see that we put all the commercial parking on the ground floor. And I'll show you on the lower levels how the lower levels were reduced. We also added a second level of parking above ground. So we continue with the commercial upper level on the San Gabriel side. And we also introduced some units along Live Oak. Part of that was to help the elevation and to create more activity on the elevation and have it be a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. And then up above, we continue the same layout as we had originally. We have a court. Now, the main courtyard's on the third level. Originally, it was on the second level. We still have the pedestrian access from the courtyard across the Wash to the adjoining triangular portion of the property on Pine Street. There's also a small tot lot there, which creates the opportunity for people from the smaller three-unit condo or apartment building come over and be able to use the facilities of the main, the main building. We have the units along the project, really, it's the same layout. We've been able to adjust some of the units, but keep overall the same layout on this level, which continues on the subsequent levels above. Now, this is a representation of the underground parking. This would be P1 level. So on the left, you see the original. It was a full level of parking as part of the way to reduce shoring and be able to do layback in construction. We did reduce the perimeter of the parking structure. So as you can see, it's reduced a bit. And as we continue to P2, we were able to do the same. The original P2 was a full level, and we were able to reduce that as well. And that definitely helps with the construction cost. Now, if we look at the elevation, we've tried to retain the, really, the look and feel of the original Spanish colonial architecture we use, which we feel fits very nicely with San Gabriel and its history. So what we did is the ground floor retail, the elevation on top is the original approved project. The one below shows the change in the project. We were able to raise the base. As you can see, we had a commercial base. And what we did, we raised it enough to fit the second-floor parking level behind it. We were able to articulate that elevation to still continue and create and keep the pedestrian arcade that faces San Gabriel. And then above that, we were able to add the additional residential level by still keeping the original detail that we had before. We have, above the main base, we were able to keep the, we have a secondary element with a third-floor roof structure, which creates porches, which helps to break down the elevation and the mass of the building. That is pushed back, that third floor is pushed back about five feet from the main residential, main commercial base. So it helps to step the building and prevent a full, full-height building, a flat elevation. And with that, we were also able to still continue some of the articulation with the decks, both enclosed and open balconies, to help break down the elevation, create some interest and texture to the elevation. And on Live Oak, we did the same. We raised the base. As you can see on the lower right-hand side, we introduced the residential on the second floor, which helps to break, to create interest and activity on that elevation. That is then, the third floor again stepped back, creating some break on the elevation and setback, adding to the interest and relief of the structure. And then on the Wash elevation, we strengthened the base, which articulates the parking level. We have openings into the parking level to take advantage of light and ventilation, natural light and ventilation, and use the different-sized openings to articulate and create some hierarchy to the elevation. And then above, we continued the same details of the original project as we continue on up. Now, this is, it's just a representation of the San Gabriel elevation, which shows the color materials we're thinking of using and shows how the difference between the original and the new one. We tried to keep as much as we could to make it feel the same way. We think it still continues a nice pedestrian-friendly scale on the lower level and continues the articulation up above. I did want to step back for a moment, if you don't mind. Just wanted to show on this level, we have some articulation on the Live Oak side, where we do have some setback from, setbacks from the original property line. So in the corner, it steps back, it comes back out. So there is an undulation on the elevation on the ground floor. On the live, on the Pine Street, we're actually set back 10 feet minimum from the property line to the building. And then on the San Gabriel side, we are right at the PL line. But as part of a large, major street like that, we have an arcade that goes from there that creates additional pedestrian activity and depth to the elevation. And let me just go back. And just to show, as a way to end this, the renderings, taken from the same angle and showing what the proposed one is in relation to the original project, still carrying the same flavor of the project. One final item we also wanted to discuss with the city council. In reviewing the staff report, the requirement for public art was placed on the project for this review. In the past review that we had had, and the past two submittals that this project has been involved with, that we have been involved with in this project, the public art was never a component or requirement of the project. We see this as an amendment to an existing project. And we would like to respectfully request that the public art component be removed as a requirement for this project, keeping it in the same line as the original approved project. With that, I'm available for any questions, if you like.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council for the presenter, applicant? Vice Mayor Wu?
Thank you for the presentation. Well, in the, in the report, in the case that you also mentioned about that concrete and shoring costs substantially increased during the past year, which is in, I, everyone knows that it's the inflation. And the current approved project does not really allow enough offset to make the project viable, is that correct?
That's correct. The original subterranean parking levels went very close to the property line. So what we did is on the lower levels, bring them down. The P level, we brought in at least 20 feet, and then the subsequent one, another 20 feet, so we could do a layback as opposed to doing a shoring. And in doing so, was a large cost-cutting feature.
Okay. According to the project history, there is a history line. On March 9, 2015, the Plan Commission and Design Review Commission approved a four-story mixed-use development with 16,549 square feet commercial space and 159 residential units. So seven years later, which is on May 9, 2022, the Planning Commission approved the four-story mixed-use development with 13,994 square feet of a commercial space and 179 residential units. So the commercial space has been reduced by 2,555 square feet from the last-approved proposal. And there was an increase of 20 residential units. So considering the relative, relatively short timeframe between the two proposals, did you anticipate the need for another increase in units to offset the construction cost? And what factors delayed the start of construction?
Well, I think part of it was the post-COVID, coming out of COVID was, you started seeing things that were changing, and things were harder to, loans were harder to get. So we were starting to face those, even while we were going through the approval process, hoping that we could go forward with that project, and that was our full intention. But as things continued, it just became, it came to the point where we just couldn't get the funding that was necessary to move forward without doing some additional.
So is the interest rate, the rise, the interest rate also impact?
That was unfortunately another element. So it was a combination of things that were hitting the project, you know, and everyone was facing them. It's not just us, unfortunately. But it did affect the construction cost.
And in comparison with the previous approved plan, you are now requesting increase another 46 additional residential units, right?
Right.
And add two stories from four to six, increase height from 50 feet to 70 feet, and only 20 residential parking spaces added. So while commercial parking spaces remain at 87, will the parking space be sufficient for resident?
They are. We're basing everything per the city code. A lot of the parking is based on bedroom count. So the bedroom count did change, so that affected the parking. We're still over, I think, about by 14 parking spaces that are flexible.
So this is like, they're not purchasing the parking space, but are, are those parking spaces are designated to the units, or?
They will be designated to units, correct.
Okay. That's all my question, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? That's all, Chad.
And I'll start with a question that might be for you, sir. You know, when we're looking at these kind of real estate projects, we think about, I think it's been brought up a little bit earlier today, about the height of the buildings and the safety factor, and, you know, in case, God forbid, you know, there's an emergency, and if our fire trucks have the ability to save, you know, whoever, you know, needs to be. And, and so I see that your project, proposed project is going to be higher than five stories. Are there any additional safety features that you've put into the design of the project so that, you know, that can mitigate or minimize the difficulty with, with fire safety?
Well, there's certain things, and mostly it's following the building code. We definitely can't do anything that would not pass either building or fire department. So we are starting that process and looking as we hopefully move forward, we'll go into CDs and look at that. But in, in the initial design, we did set up different, broke the building down into different fire, into different, basically buildings, creating different firewalls.
Okay. Can you describe that a little bit, just for layman, like, to understand how it works?
It makes us break down the building, because if we're over a certain square footage, then we have to break it down basically into what's considered another building by dividing the structure with a firewall, a two-hour firewall between the two buildings. That allows, which helps in terms of rescuing, so it prevents the building from passing fire from one side to the other.
Okay.
And doing so, that was one of the initial things we did, as, as we start looking at code issues, but we'll definitely work with fire department and provide the necessary requirements. I mean, a six-story structure today is not a very uncommon building type, so there's definitely code, code requirements that apply to building like those to allow it to, to function safely.
Okay. Thank you. And another question I had, and I'm not sure if this is a question for you or, or maybe Samantha, but just going through the history of the project, I'm looking at staff report, page three, and, you know, just the timeline. There's, there's a section about May 26 of 2008, with the Design Review Commission approving a three-year extension to April 3 of 2011, and then it jumps to 2015. What happened in that time, or?
That's hard to say. We weren't part of the project. I think the project went dormant, as far as I know.
Okay. So just, the owner just didn't do anything?
Didn't move forward, for whatever reason, I can't speculate.
Oh, okay. Thanks. And, let's see, what else do I have? Oh, and maybe this clarification for Samantha. What you mentioned about the, we're, I guess, an item that came up was the requirement for public art. Did you say that that's, it's not quite a requirement for this project, or, but it's a suggestion, or how does that work?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So as far as a requirement, Mission District is an absolute requirement, expressly required. Valley Boulevard is a recommendation that it be consistent with Mission District, and this is, again, to keep at the consistency, but not a requirement.
I see. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for right now. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we actually follow up on that real quick? Samantha, that requirement, was it part of the approval of the Planning Commission? I didn't see that.
No. Oh, as far as being a part of the condition and the project description, yes.
I was looking through that, I did not see that. Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Ding, do you have any questions?
Yes. Just continuing for the public art, the, like, clear, for the, even for the valley in the Mission District, it's a suggestion or require?
Both. Mission District is a requirement. Valley is recommended that the value of the art be similar to Mission District.
So you mentioned the, also public art, you have the dollar amount to?
It's 1% of the construction costs.
1%. But, that, I think maybe, I, I really interesting why the 1%, but maybe have the public art, maybe they really did a good job, the cost may be less than 1%?
Unfortunately, staff does not have the background to that. The 1% in the Mission District is a part of the plan from 2004. So as part, as, as far as where that value comes from, it could have been based off of what adjacent cities such as Pasadena may evaluate their art based on, but that value comes from 2004, and I do not have the background on that.
I have a little bit. I was here, not on council, but I remember when these, we're going through, the reason they did in Mission District specifically is because the unique character of the district, they wanted the art to reflect style of construction, because it's very, obviously it's a specific plan, but it's a very unique character, and the city council at the time wanted to maintain that character, and they wanted the art to kind of bring the architecture right into the street. I remember that was one of the, I think it was Mayor Camarano who said that, something along those lines, like, they wanted the architecture to flow right into the street, and so they put that art component on that, and it was put into the plan. I was at one of those meetings, so I've been here a while.
But, but I, interesting, though, maybe they can, still can achieve the public art? The cost may be less than that, it's also the good, the public art?
Well, I think before we get into, this is more deliberation, we're still doing factual questions. So we can ask why it was put in, but we can discuss the?
The clarifying question.
Yeah, this is clarifying, this isn't deliberation.
All right.
We can get into that once.
Okay.
Whether, that's a council question. I didn't want to get too far into deliberation, but that's actually why it was in the Mission District.
All right. So I think it's already discussed, okay? That's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And I did have one more factual question, and this was brought up by one of the comments, I just, for my edification, the reason an MND was suggested rather than EIR, I won't have that just on top of mind when we do our deliberation, because I know it was an issue we received from the public, so I'd just like staff's comment or experts' comment as to why an MND versus an EIR.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and if it's acceptable to the council, staff's opinion that it's more appropriate for the environmental consultant to address that on a technical basis.
Perfect, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jessie Fan, I'm with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I am the Sequa Project Manager. I prepared and managed the ISMND for the Rubio Village Mixed Use Project. And so to answer your question as well, some of the commenters today as to why an ISMND was prepared, this is a standalone ISMND that was prepared for this project. It was not tiered from the 2007 EIR, and basically, we took project-specific information that was prepared specifically from this application, from the site plan that you see here today, and we ran all of the technical analyses related to Sequa under Appendix G. When we did all of the analysis, it occurred, it, the results came out that all of the impacts that were potentially significant could be mitigated to a less than significant impact. Therefore, we were able to utilize an initial study mitigated negative declaration, because all of the impacts were mitigated, and none of the impacts were significant and unavoidable. Therefore, an EIR was not needed, and therefore, we did not need to go any further, and so an MND was the appropriate document. So I hope that answers your question related to why an MND was the appropriate document.
If you could elaborate a little bit as to what would have triggered an EIR, because that's a question I always have.
Sure, of course.
Because you kind of got into it, but not a lot of deal, just, not a whole lot, but what would trigger an EIR?
Sure. So what triggers an EIR is if you have a significant and unavoidable impact under Sequa. So under Sequa, there's all these different thresholds. I'll pick on one example, air quality. If you have a significant unavoidable impact, if you're unable to mitigate it, you know, you have certain construction equipment, and of course, my colleague behind me, Heidi Rus, will be able to explain that a little bit more, but if you're unable to mitigate it, then you would have a significant and unavoidable impact, that would trigger an EIR. And so when you do have a significant and unavoidable impact, you would not be able to utilize a mitigated negative declaration. So for any of the different impact areas that we analyze under Sequa, as long as you have a significant and unavoidable impact, we'd have to do an EIR. So after all of the analysis that we've done specific for the project, everything was able to get mitigated, and that's why we ended up with an MND.
All right, thank you. Any follow-up, or? I understand that, clears mouth? Okay, thank you, I think that answers, that answers my question on that for the factual part. The rest of mine would be deliberation.
Sure. And I did want to clarify one comment, too, as it related to biological, biological resources. The commenter did provide a comment letter as it related to biological resources on the project site. The ISMND did include a mitigation measure related to the nesting birds. While the commenter did have a biologist go out on site and note that there were birds and other species that they did see out on the site, the species that they did see on the site are on the birds of conservation concern, and they were also common birds of prey, and those are kind of common birds that would utilize the site and just kind of the general site in the urbanized environment. And so all of those are native species, and they're commonly found in the residential backyards, parks, and just ornamental landscaping. So because the project is going to provide more open space than what is currently there, they are going to provide more trees than what is previously provided and what is currently there, those birds are going to be thriving and going to come back to the site. So I did want to bring that up as well. Additionally, the mitigation measure that is included in the initial study would satisfy a mitigation standard for the birds, because it does allow for nesting, pre-construction nesting bird surveys to be completed prior to make sure that none of the birds would be impacted, and therefore, that impact was reduced to a less than significant level. So I did want to bring that back up, too, as well. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. All right, so we've gone through public comment. I will now close the public hearing, so there's no more questions, and that would be time for council deliberation and discussion. Now we can go into the whys and wherefore. Anybody want to start? Any deliberation items? Councilwoman Chaka?
Thank you so much. This project has been there for so long. I, I hope we can finally move forward for the sake of our city and our neighbors, and I hope we can come to some kind of agreement tonight. I understand that changes had to be made to make it viable. Just want to remind everyone, this is a very challenging site. That Rubio, or the, the Wash area, what you've done is pretty amazing, to leave that and to work around it, to make it a viable project. I know there's been some serious financial issues since 2007, when it first started. I personally really liked the Spanish Colonial. I think there was some conversation in the past about making it, I don't know what you call it, Ardeco. I think the Spaniard Colonial is perfect there. I, I think the additional housing units definitely helps arena goals. I did listen a bit to the Planning Commission, too. I just want this to be built. But one of the things to bring it, to make it very clear, is that that increase now puts it at the same scale as our hotels, because our hotels are six stories. The Curiel, the new one, when it does get built, is six stories, the Sheraton, six stories. And so the issue regarding to the ladder truck, we've had that issue over and over again, and I don't see the fire chief here, but, you know, what we don't talk about is that this has kind of left, left the stations, let's, just, you know, just to say that, I guess, kind of a pun intended there. We are building, and so we do need a ladder truck, but that, the conversation should be separated from this project. When we talk about ladder trucks, you know, there's housing, you know, how are we going to house it? There are staffing issues, too, and that should be a separate discussion. We have the hotels already, we have quite a few other buildings that may not be six stories, but it's on that scale. But I think to, to make this project pencil out, as they say, I understand it had to increase to six stories. My question, my question's kind of focused on, let's start, start with the public art a little bit, we've talked about that, and I do see, I think a council member that was here when that public art did take place, and I believe you're part of the team also, former council member, David Gutierrez, could you explain a little bit about it? Because I, I am tending to say, just leave it in there, but can you explain why, I understand why it was included, but why you feel that should be excluded now? Please?
Thank you, Councilmember Manchaca, Mayor Harrington, Vice Mayor Wu, members of the council and staff. You are absolutely correct. I was on council at the time that, that this was originally entitled, and as my partner here, Everardo, has articulated very well, whether it be the initial entitlement that this project received, or what we're looking at in the most recent entitlement, which was for the 179 units, there was never a requirement for public art. We now know that it is not basically required for this particular corridor. We understand the significance of always providing public art, but as we have shared with you this evening, we're back here today with the revised version of what we've seen several times, and the reason is because of the financial impact that we're facing with the previous entitlements. So that being said, and I am pleased, I would ask Samantha to correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure that, as the way I understand it, that it's a complete 1% across the board. I think it may be a sliding scale based on valuation of construction. So that, with that in mind, if, you know, we were to be assessed the requirement for placing additional, or a new component of public art, it would be a significant impact financially to the project. There's only so much that we are able to provide in order to make this buildable, so I ask for your consideration in, in removing that component. As it, as I mentioned, it's never been a part of it, and we're looking that, you know, we, we don't feel that it should be, that has a place with the new project, with the revised project as well.
So if it's 1%, what, what, what would that, could it quantify it for us? What would that look like, additional cost?
If, if you were looking at the total 1%, I'm not, I don't, I don't have that number in front of me. It, you're, you're looking at probably 300, and I would say somewhere around $355,000 of 1% for the 225 units. That, that's significant. I mean, as you would, would understand, $355,000, when we're now looking at an opportunity based on the revised project of saving a little over $7 million. That, in addition to the increased number, the 46 units, which will provide for an additional return on the investment, makes this buildable. So if we are now impacted with another financial hit with public art, it's going to make, it's going to make it difficult for the development team.
Well, it just happens to be about the same number. So on page 10, it shows all the development impact fees, which totaled $2,073,000. And so that's going to go into a variety of things, police facilities, fire facilities, open space, traffic impact, sewer impact. But then on page 11, it was renegotiated to, I guess it says, you volunteered, to contribute an additional $400,000. So it happens to be almost the same amount of money as the public.
If I might clarify? If I might clarify that for you, Councilmember Manchaca. So the development impact fees, our development impact fees that we're going to... That any project would be assessed as it moves forward into construction. What we are providing in the number of... That you just suggested, the four $100,000 items for a total of $400,000, are a give-back-to-the-city in consideration for the allowance of increased density, if that makes sense.
Okay.
That's above and beyond the impact fees.
Yes, exactly. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know if I made that clear. Yeah, the $2,073 plus the $400,000. And the $400,000 actually would go directly into our general fund, whereas the impact fees are going into public services.
That is correct.
Yeah. So there is a difference. You're right. Okay. And I called you up, David, just because I'm more familiar with you than the rest of the crew here. And I know you've been here since the beginning. What are your thoughts about the height since you were there during council? Now you're here now. Can you give us some of your thoughts about the height? I'm just kind of curious because you've been here... It's almost 20 years that this project's been in its, you know, development. And it just kind of saddens me, to be honest. I mean, we should just get this thing done. And I understand we had to... There was financial issues. The first owner kind of sat there. I think Councilmember Chan kind of alluded to it, you know, what happened? And I was there. And now we're trying to get it done. I think this is... Might be the second time since I've been on council that this project has come to sit, to the council. But can you kind of share your thoughts as a resident? Because you're also a resident of San Gabriel and also being part of the project about the height? Because I know that's a concern for many.
And it's a great question. And what I think... I'm very comfortable with the increased height. And as Everardo has suggested, as we look around the region, it is not unheard of to see a very even normal, typical, new types of development, six stories. I may also remind the council that there is an entitled project across the street on the east side of San Gabriel Boulevard that is allowed and has been approved for six stories. So I think in all fairness and equality, considering that this potentially... This project to the east can be built with six stories. And quite honestly, I think this particular project is architecturally superior to that. And you're right. This has been my baby from the get-go, as I've shared with many people. I was on council and helped to negotiate certain parcels to be acquired to make this whole thing work. I remember the Prevallers Corner, that live oak in San Gabriel Boulevard, and the reluctance for the owner not to sell it to the developer who owned the entire rest of the parcel. And it wouldn't... It would have made for a very, very ugly project. We were finally able to get them to sell and negotiate. And was... We then ended up with a footprint that we have today, including the parcel in pine. So you're correct in your earlier opinion about it's a relatively difficult footprint to work with. But Everardo, L-CRA, has worked very hard. They continue to work hard to bring it to what we see here today as an opportunity. And I think it's a beautiful project. I'm very comfortable with it. And I, like you, would love to see it built. I think that way back when I was on the council, we had considered that San Gabriel Boulevard was our main... Should be our main focus for looking at new development as a main corridor. And then Valley Boulevard came about. And then we kind of changed our focus to Valley Boulevard. But we've... As far as I'm concerned, and we've not lost the opportunities that I think San Gabriel presents. As you see with this project, certainly with the other project to the south, the old nursery project. And I think the other projects that were... That are on the horizon for the east side of San Gabriel Boulevard. So that certainly... San Gabriel Boulevard in Las Tunes is one that I think is on the horizon of submitting specific plan. And certainly Mr. Chang's project at 220, the embassy, is, I understand it, interested in revitalizing and renewing their entitlements. So I think there's a lot of projects coming down the pipe. And I think what I see with the enthusiasm of the current owner and the architectural team, this is going to move forward, and I'm excited about it. And, you know, certainly with your blessing here tonight, we can make it happen.
So if we do... If you do get our blessing, as you say, how soon could this project begin?
As soon as Everardo is able to put together his construction documents. And I know that there may be some discussion about that happening soon. So that may be a question that you might...
Because I've heard several times before, oh, we're ready with the shovels. Actually, I've been there. Yeah, I was there. Yeah, the groundbreaking with the gold shovels. I was there. It was one of the first times. And here we are still. Yeah, Senator... Actually, you're right. Senator Rubio, Rubio Village. Yeah, we had a good chat there. But anyway.
We definitely are definitely ready to move forward. For us, as soon as hopefully we get approvals, we'll be able to move forward with construction documents and prepare for plan check. And right now, that is our goal. We have preliminary schedule to move forward in that direction. So we want this to happen, and our client wants it as well. I think this is the opportunity to get it going. And we want to see it built, too.
Yeah, on the timeline, we've had quite a few plan checks. I keep seeing that, but nothing ever happened.
We were involved with one in the 2018. I think we got it to a point in plan check, we're ready. But unfortunately, again, economics came into foil us. So we're hoping this is an opportunity to move forward and get it done.
Yeah, I am concerned with the economics having an impact. And so I just want to ask my councilmembers to really think this through because we do have some economic concerns in the horizon. And so the sooner we can get this moving, I think, the better.
We would appreciate it.
So...
Appreciate it. Because it's becoming very challenging out there.
Oh, yeah, I know.
And we can get it and get it moving.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
I have a quick, just easy question for either gentleman or both. So assuming if the project gets blessed today and there's the groundbreaking, realistically, how long would it take to be... To actually do it and be done and ready for moving and...
To do the actual construction or...
Yeah.
Well, hopefully...
What's that look like?
Plan check would probably take about six to eight months, depending on the city and the plan check process. It can take a while. But once that done, I think construction will be 18 months to two years for construction.
All right. So not like four years, five years?
No. No, it's not.
Okay. All right.
It won't be feasible for them to also stretch it that long as we start the construction. So the hope is to get it moving within a more realistic timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, Vice Mayor? We'll do discussion. We're doing some discussions, so you can do both.
You both defer, we'll never go. The same question, though, with the council change. So it's 18 months to start from construction? Or you think it would be finished for the construction?
Well, that would be the construction period. So from breaking ground to end will probably be 18 to two years.
Okay. 18 months or two years and plus the plan check?
Plan check process.
Do you need the regular... So you think it's eight months? We need it? Okay. Actually, groundbreaking, at that time, I'm not council member. I just commissioned. I have to... I have a chance to witness for this groundbreaking check. A groundbreaking, the event. For that time, I'm a resident. I'm really happy to have... See that this kind of, especially in the Wash, have this kind of project in our city. I expecting that you already finished. But right now, it's come back to... But currently, I'm a council member. So I love to see the project to finish the AACP. But I also see, because a lot of change, so my feeling... So for the current, like a developer, they... Is he have in... I know that while you're increasing, increasingly want to be feasible for the profit, right? Okay. But the reality is they have any, like a financial, still can achieve this kind of project? We don't... Actually, we don't want it, like, wait, just in case. If lucky, if approved, but still wait another four years, nothing happen. That's what we don't want, right? Yeah. So is it okay they are financial to if we... Yeah. Can move forward it?
Well, I think as far as... I'm not that privy to a lot of the information in terms of the financial. But I think they're definitely working on it. And with this go-around, they've done some preliminary numbers, and it's looking more realistic. So that's why they're moving forward with the process.
Thank you. And another question, this is project, it's our city's first project with the affordable housing? Or it's already have another one?
Is it the first project with an affordable housing component? No, it's not. This past year, a project was approved at 1975 South Del Mar that has an affordable housing component. Also, there are a few smaller-scale, multi-unit condo projects in order to take advantage of concessions and waivers under the density bonus law are also providing affordable housing. So now that housing has been at the forefront of conversations, I think property owners and developers are starting to take advantage of what is available in the laws. Plus, the council has spent the past year discussing affordability as well as the planning commission. So this is not the first project.
Okay. But the... Like, not the first project, but you mentioned that another project? The projects already finished it or still ongoing to build it project for the affordable housing?
No, they've been approved. As far as constructed project, it's 60 East Valley, 400 Province, 101. Those do not include affordable units.
So actually, this is not related to this one, but it's generally... So if, like you mentioned, have affordable housing, so is it how can we let the... If they finish it, the resident to know they have opportunity to get this kind of affordable housing? If they willing to rent or buy it?
As a private development, unlike a subsidized project that comes with state or federal funding that typically goes through a lottery system, and there's a process that's in place. With private development, it's about monitoring the construction, contacting the property owner, and ultimately getting on a waitlist however they decide to pick their tenants or whichever owner purchase a unit.
The question is how can we, our city size, let the community know that?
Under the project description on the city's website, staff can put that there's affordable units as part of the project.
Yeah, because a lot of residents are asking for that, too.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And for this project, also, the... Based on the staff report, the recommendation for the public art program. So like the suggestion, like, because this is also called the Rubio Village, it's really feel like a Spanish colonial. I still want to... Okay, maybe David can help. For this 1%, it's how much it costs total based on the construction cost? What's the total?
Councilmember Ding. So based on my calculations, if it... If that 1% and the sliding scale is applied to the construction costs of the entire 225 units, we're looking at a total cost of approximately $355,000.
Three hundred fifty.
That would be required based on the sliding scale of 1% if that makes sense. Now, I mean, and certainly, considering that 179 of these units were already entitled. And if the council is, for some reason, feeling that there should be some type of public art, our thought is that it not be applied to the entire 225 units, but rather the differential between the 179 units that were previously entitled and the 225, which is 46 units. And so then that figure becomes significantly smaller. And even at that, it would still be a financial challenge to the developer. We would, again, respectfully consider or ask that the council consider not having any requirement for public art.
Okay, thank you. But I saw you... You're also willing to decide the impact fee. Have a development agreement. It's just extra $400,000 to the city.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know what rest of our council members, what do they... We can think about it? Either like the staff recommendation, maybe? Because you say $355,000 for the...
Just for the public art, if it's applied to all 225 units as...
The total, how much? Total is $355,000 or...
If it's applied to the entire 225 units, yes, for construction cost.
Okay.
Minus what's...
But this amount is less than $400,000 you give to, extra for the city?
Those are different things.
Two different things.
Yeah. So the $400,000 that we are agreeing to provide to the city is our acknowledgement for the allowance to... For the increased size of the project, so increased density. So what we did is we took a look at the other projects that have recently been approved by the city. And within their development agreements, we did a little bit of research to figure out what they contributed to the city. So we wanted to, in good faith, provide a reasonable contribution that would parallel these other agreements, the other development agreements that have recently been approved. So that's where we came up with the $400,000 figure.
Yeah, thank you. That's good for the city. I like it, but I just want to see the... How can we find the common goal to move forwarding? So that's why I think you have the... This is $400,000. Maybe is it market, we can use the city to like if we prefer to the public art? Something like that?
Thank you, Councilmember Ding. Just to add to what Mr. Gutierrez said, the $400,000 is an offer from the developer that would go to the general fund. I think Councilman Manchaca mentioned that earlier. It would go to the general fund. If the council decided to do public art with that, that would be an allowable use. I would guess the council wouldn't do that with the general fund money, but that would be under the council's purview.
Yeah, yeah.
The $350,000 art fee, that is something that the developer would have to provide on the project itself. So they would have either some sort of sculpture or fountain or I've seen some projects, like the project on Charlotte and Valley that has decorative mosaic tile on the outside of the building. So it wouldn't be a contribution to the city. It would be a fee that they have to spend on their project for public art that beautifies the... So it wouldn't be a contribution to the city. It would be a fee that they have to spend on their project for public art that beautifies the art. As, as Vice Mayor Harrington mentioned in the mission specific plan.
And they have to have the one percent or like they can achieve the public art, but maybe before they are developed, it's where we find the, the last cost?
Ultimately, if, if you require a fee, we have to judge it based on something as a staff. So we would have to say, you know, either a, a dollar amount or a percentage. You could also have a condition that there be some sort of an art piece that is proposed by the developer and then approved down the road by the Design Review Commission or the Planning Commission. But without some sort of a, of a number or a percentage, it's very difficult for staff to determine whether it's an appropriate a piece of art. All of that to say is, as Samantha mentioned, this is a request or a recommendation from staff, but it's not a requirement. If council feels it's not appropriate, you can remove that condition altogether, or you can come up with some other percentage. It can be half a percent, it could be a dollar amount, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, fifty thousand. It's, ultimately, this is a negotiation because it's not a requirement. It was staff trying to make the project better and adding to the project to try to reduce the impact.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Yeah. Another question, it's regarding the, just want to clear for the, like, this setback on the life oak and pine. So this setback, it's to keep the, the, the pedestrian, the, the walkway on there or just, just on the street? Sidewalk is still there, right?
Property line.
Yeah, property line, it's, yeah.
Setback is from the property line, not the street.
Not, not a street, right? Okay. And, all right, yes, that's my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I guess it's my turn. I have a few, I don't want to go too far back in history, but and I don't want to compare one project to another, but we almost inevitably have to. I think when this project was first started, or before it first started, we had two structures in the city that were over three stories. That was the hospital and the Hilton. That's it. Come a long way since then. I mean, it's a lot different. And obviously, we've, the council has approved a lot more density and a lot higher building construction. I think I voted no on all of them, but that's me. I, I'm the type where we've been, I'll take the first issue, which is the height and the rescue. I know we said, don't discuss that. We've, I've, since the first one that got approved, I said, I can't approve this. And I said, they're all going to be cumulative. This is cumulative. We're doing nothing about it. So I think it's time to stop kicking the can and do something. We're getting more and more. So my scenario is not what if this building catches on fire? We can handle one building. Mutual aid will take care of it. My scenario is, and I think this goes back to maybe an I C A thing we had in two thousand nine, no, sorry, two thousand eighteen or nineteen, that was discussing what happens when there's a giant earthquake and it's all five or six of our projects that are six, five stories, six stories. There's no mutual aid for that. So we have to make sure the people in those structures are safe. Or at least we can do something about it without relying on mutual aid. And there's areas of refuge. There's things you can do in construction that'll mitigate that somewhat, but at one point, we still got to get the fire out if there's no water. We still have to get, you know, there's a lot of things we have to do. So I, me personally, I'd like to tie the added money to start a fund for a quint or something along those lines so that we get that going. I'm not saying add additional money to this. They've already offered additional money. I'd like to see a certain amount. We start that fund dedicated to getting us, eventually, hopefully, the bond passes that we talked about and getting a fire station, police station that's state of the art, that can hold a quint, that now we restaff it. This could be the seed for that, that we say, we're dedicating whatever amount of that four hundred thousand to start a fund. And that fund grows and then we keep adding to it and we do it with these negotiated projects. So I'd like to see some discussion as to that, if the council would entertain that. I think that's responsible. I think that's already some quote unquote, extra money that's been offered. We could set aside some of that to start a fund. I think that would be a great beginning. Who knows when it comes to fruition, but at least we've started now and not talked about it.
Mr. Ray, just a clarification, please explain what a quint is?
Oh, it's a hook and ladder. Quint is a, something that can reach high. It's a type of, of
Fire truck.
Addis in fire language that will reach more than three stories.
Thank you.
I've learned that over the years. I'm using their terminology.
So, so layman's language is just a fire truck with ladder?
That can rescue above three stories. Our current ability is three stories with our fire department. They would have to have another type of engine and different, added personnel and more training to get up.
It's my understanding, the personnel, because I've asked that question too. I mean, I think it's like up to nine to twelve additional staffing.
Million dollars.
And then we have to have a place to house it. And what we have right now is not, so I, I mean, I agree with you. We need to have that conversation, but that would have to be a whole separate agenda item because it's
Correct.
Costs are pretty.
What I'm saying is get that started here and say that we're starting that discussion because next year, we are going, we've discussed going into, I think this is still within our round act discussion. We've discussed the bond, which would be the police and fire, and that's related to the safety. A big station that would be a combo that would accommodate that. And if we're thinking ahead, we can plan that right now. We can start the planning.
Well, so I agree with you to have an agenda item to have that discussion.
Question is, if, first of all, we want to need the, the, the high ladder, right, the, the engine. But the, the, the reality is, so our current fire station, maybe we cannot cannot keep the, the engine too, right? That's the problem.
Well, that's why we're, we're discussing the future.
Yeah.
Station that we've discussed or the, has been
Yeah.
Not proposed, I would say discussed, is combo fire, police station that would be able to accommodate it in the future.
Yeah, I think we discussed, literally discussed before, but I think this issue, it should be like ten years ago. I, I remember we, 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 I, I, the resident, I hear about it with the, the have the new building for our P D. That time was P D only, right?
More like twenty, but yeah, you probably heard about it.
Yeah. So, but a good, good top, actually, good discussion, yeah, good discussion is like before. Like, I'm thinking a couple of months ago, we, a public safety building, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, we're talking about, yeah, so I agree. So for the
The reason
Year, yeah.
The reason we have this fund now is many councils ago, they started the fund for fire engines, police cars. Before, we were trying to like come up with a budget every year. And then we said, if you don't dedicate specific funds to it, you're always going to be chasing it rather than planning for it.
Yeah.
I just want to get that on top of mind to start planning for this rather than chasing it. That's just, that's my basic comment on that. I'd really like to see some of this money go towards that.
Thank you.
My next is regarding the public art. I understand the Mission District requirement. I really do. It is a unique district. San Gabriel Boulevard, not so unique to me. It's, it's going to be beautiful. Right now, it's not. I think public art could help that. Seeing the density and the size of this project and the fact it takes up the whole footprint basically at that exterior. I don't know what public art would look like on this. Are we going to hang tapestries or what are we going to do that's going to, it's all the way to the street? Otherwise, this is going to be inside. So I'm not sure it makes sense here, but I think, and I don't know that, I don't want to say the whole three hundred thousand. I agree that it should be the delta. I would like to see something maybe off-site. And I'm thinking maybe towards the Veterans Memorial, some, make a donation to that or, you know, tagged to this property. It doesn't have to be on-site. That beautifies our city. It brings community together. And the name of the, the developer can be put on it or this dedicated by da, 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 da.
But you said delta, so.
Forty, the added forty units from the
So forty times the one percent, what is that going to look like?
Well, I mean, when you're talking
Hundred thousand, I mean, what?
Probably less. I would say probably less. I don't know the cost of each unit, but similar, I'm talking like probably fifty, fifty-five thousand, whatever it is.
That's miniscule.
Staff can figure out, but I'm just saying, I would like to see, I'm not sure something on-site would improve the architecture. The architecture itself, to me, is almost art. It's a beautiful architecture. So that's just, that's for council to discuss. I think the one percent is a little high. This is not the same character as the Mission District, and I do believe it should be for the new units because the other ones were already entitled. So I think my last comment is really just, once again, it's more council. I am always concerned about environmental impact reports and why we're making decisions because in the end, the council does have to make that finding, then we have to agree, rely upon our experts. And, and I do agree that after you read it, there, they did an analysis and they said, this doesn't trigger a new I R. And that's, many times, that's why I ask those types of questions, so that we do have a record. If there is a challenge down the line, they can't say, council never thought about this. It's in the written record and now it's in the, the council record that we, we were thoughtful. We heard our experts and we made our decision based upon that. So that's kind of why I wanted that in the record, that. I do believe that after reading the significantly long report, that we can build this. To me, the thing that triggers, to me, like, there's actually less environmental impact, believe it or not, that we're going a bigger project. When you're going underground, think of all the excavation and all the diesel going into the air when you're digging. It's a lot different than constructing above ground. And so the fact they're not doing all the shoring and all this, it's a lot less construction impact. Now, we're going higher with, you know, framing and what else, whatnot, but the, when you watch a construction project, the amount of smoke and everything put in the air to dig in the ground is amazing. And it's, it's all day long for a few months. You're just, you know, the only way to move earth is energy and our energy is obviously carbon-based. So I really think there is less impact for this project than, than the four-story project. When you're, when you're scaling back the underground that much, it's a lot less cost to the environment to build up than down. So I, I, I do take that as part of why we can say, oh, we don't need a whole new environmental impact. Now, there's other stuff like the added units or more people, more utilities, all that, but that's, in the report, it's accounted for. I think that's, that's the extent of my, kind of what I see on this, this, and I'll just call it the added forty units because the other stuff was already approved. I, I'm not happiest with the height, but like I said, this is probably our fifth one now that's above our three-story threshold. It is what it is. Yeah, well, it's not long gone, but it's something we can negotiate. And that's kind of where I'm at as far as like, I appreciate the added funds. I appreciate the, hopefully, we can get a concession on the art. I think I would be okay with that. I think that would, that's what would make me, put me in the, I'm kind of like, I don't want to have like six in a row where I vote no just because of height. I'm just going to, that would be my only factor here is the height. I really do see that as a real true safety factor. Our, once again, our fire department made no comment as to that. There's no, nothing in the report that even addresses it. And I've asked several times, address it. Tell me you're okay with it. Positively say, we're good with that, but still haven't seen it in a single staff report. And I've asked more every single time. So I don't know how to change that. That's my comment. Anyone trigger any, any follow-up or?
Thank you so much for, for the input. Actually, I, well, I definitely agree with that. That is how I feel. But I really great to see that more units were fulfilled. I mean, at least the regional housing needs, you know, assessment, the rental numbers that will be helping us, you know, to fulfill the application of housing element things. And also especially that we will have more, having more affordable units to our community, especially for low income. I totally agree with the, the mayor that we definitely need a public safety, new buildings that will be combined with fire and police. And that is why we were, we are having a study right now. The research company will be doing that. How we can just put it on ballots and have our constituents to, to decide. I think this is important that we, I would like to treat their, their words as a commitment, not bringing back again with additional, like, another story.
Seven stories.
Don't let us down because I, I personally believe inflation is the key, that the time is the issue. I always try to explain to the people what the inflation is. That my wife asked me to buy a chicken in the supermarket by ten dollars, but when I arrive, I can, I realized that over the counter, I can only get one chicken leg. And I end up with only get one egg home. So that's a, I, I know this is, the time is really important. Don't make the money smaller and smaller and you have to come back and saying, you know what? We have, the cost has gone so high, we need another additional unit. So I think time is the, the key. That I, I, I would, this is my, my comment. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to clarify one of the comments, Vice Mayor Wu, not Vice Mayor Harrington, city manager, that you mentioned. For this study, is there, when we're trying to price things, are we taking into consideration the possibility of having a place to house this fire truck with ladder? Is that part of the study that's being done? And also with this bond, does it cover salaries? Because I thought it was just infrastructure. Because with this ladder, we're looking at nine to twelve, you know, a shift of some sort to accommodate.
So that's a great question. So for the, the bond, we are looking at a bond amount. I think sixty million dollars is the number we're pulling, plus lesser amounts. I think we did a couple of alternates to see if sixty million wasn't supported and would, for instance, forty million or thirty million. I can't remember those two numbers, but we're, we're also looking at two lesser numbers. We would then, if the count, if the community looked like they would support that, we would start to do some of that space planning. And I didn't interject because we haven't come to that conclusion yet, but there is one scenario where everybody from Fire Station Fifty-One, which is our south station, if they move to a new public safety building, everyone meaning all the administration and the, the division chiefs, if they move to the new public safety building, if we build the E O C at the new public safety building, then you could clear out the back of the lot and you could add some dorms on the back of the building. And then a quint or a, the ladder truck could drive through the back and park inside of the building. So we wouldn't tell the community for sure that it's going to be at a new station on the side of the current police station, but we would look at several options to come up with that. The building is one part of the equation. The actual purchase of the equipment, which is the, the ladder truck, is another part. And then, as you said, planning for nine to twelve or however many, there, there are many ways to deploy that. Planning for those additional positions would be over and above that, and that would be ongoing in our general fund budget. We, we don't include the revenue from projects like this in our future budgets because we are very conservative and the city has gotten into trouble in the past by looking at a project like this and saying, let's, you know, we're going to make X number of sales tax dollars and property tax dollars, so let's forecast that into our budget and spend accordingly. But with projects like these, it will cure the problem of being able to fund extra public safety as well as plan checkers and code enforcement officers and other positions throughout the city, assuming we don't hit an economic downturn or what have you. But all of that to say, those positions should be supported in totality by all the projects that are being built in the city.
Thank you, Mark. So I was just going to say that one of the comments, the mayor said, and, and I agree to an extent, it's about the public art. But I just think if we're looking at just the delta and we're looking at fifty thousand, I just think it's so miniscule. You know, I, I would just ask the developers, in particular David, since he lives here, just to be good neighbors. I mean, we, we have a variety of nonprofits that could use assistance. We have events that are taking place. The Lantern Lunar Festival, you know, the Los Muertos, and we're going to be talking this evening, if you'd love to stay a little longer, about our new and exciting Fourth of July parade. But I would hate to kind of nickel and dime because this project is so important, you know, fifty thousand, whatever that number is. Just be a good neighbor. And so I'd like to make a motion, if there's no other conversation or discussion, to move forward with this project as recommended and exclude the public art, artificial percentage that was included in there. And so that would be my motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
50,000 go to?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Like, not require it.
Totally exclude it, even no 50,000?
No, right.
Okay. So, but the mayor is suggesting to go to the...
That's not the motion, though.
Okay.
Vote your conscience.
I'm seconding, seconding Councilmember Machaca's motion.
I just want to clarify. So we make a vote?
We have a motion and a second, so let's vote.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just to confirm, are we going to vote for wave full reading, introduce ordinance number 700? Is it the one?
Yeah, we actually, she, Councilor Machaca only modified the recommended action by removing the art component, everything else is included.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Got a nod from the city attorney, that's a legal motion.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I am going to stay, because I have another agenda.
He's beholden to us. Yes. I was going to poll the council, yes. We're going to take a five-minute break, we'll return. Yep, ready. All right, I will call the meeting back to order at 10:00 PM. I'll remind the council, we have three items to go, and we have to be done by 11:00, so... Next item, please.
Or just number 699, annexation and pre-zoning, introduction and first reading, 5623 North Gladys Avenue, applicant Alex Alvarez.
So we'll open the public hearing. Planning Manager Samantha Tousart will make the staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you is "Few and Far in Between." This is an annexation and a pre-zoning for a property that's located at 5623 North Gladys Avenue, and this is in Los Angeles County. The subject property, as shown on this map right here, is located on the west side of Gladys Avenue, sandwiched between Los Tunas Drive and Live Oak Street. And the property owner is seeking to file an application with the local agency formation commission for the county of Los Angeles, and that's LAFCO, to initiate proceedings for the change of organization that includes annexation and pre-zoning of this property, essentially to incorporate the property from the county of Los Angeles to the city of San Gabriel. The property, as shown here, is approximately 7,500 square feet in size, and is currently developed within 873 square foot, one-story, single-family dwelling and a detached garage. This property is the only remaining Los Angeles County property on the block, and the only remaining residentially-developed property on this block. This is an image of Los Angeles County zoning map. The property is currently zoned R1, single-family, and the subject property is located within San Gabriel's sphere of influence. The property owner also owns nine other parcels within this block, with the exception of the southwest corner. It's a one-story, multi-tenant, commercial building that is not owned by the property This is the San Gabriel's general plan land use map. It shows that the entire block, along with surrounding areas, are C1 zone properties, retail, commercial, again, with the only standalone property that is still within Los Angeles County, and it's a residential property. And the zoning is reflective of the land use. LAFCO is responsible for making local and special district boundary decisions within Los Angeles County. However, the local agency, which is San Gabriel, is required to review, approve, and forward annexation and pre-zoning requests to LAFCO for approval, for their consideration before their commission. The pre-zoning would require the amendment of the general plan land use, again, going from LA County land use of a single-family or of residential to commercial, specifically R1 to C1, a retail commercial. As to general plan consistency, the approval this evening will allow for this consistency. It has already been mentioned, as part of the previous application, there is an intent by the property owner to come forward with a project proposal, and it is their intent to be able to incorporate this parcel into their project design. As it is without this annexation, it would be the only piece that would be left out as part of this block. So the property owner requested to bring forth this application, so that when they do come through with their project design, that it incorporates the entire block, again, with the exception of the southwest corner. And this is what will help to fulfill the general plan goals. It will allow for the development of the block in order to provide, to provide additional housing, is it's potentially a mixed-use proposal, similar to the project that was just reviewed. There will be a commercial component and a residential component. So with this approval, it would come with the economic benefits, as well as meeting housing goals, and hopefully a project design that will be compatible with the area. As to environmental review, as required for all projects that are discretionary, it was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act with CEQA. In this particular case, there is an exemption that is written for annexations of existing facilities and lots, so this type of application does qualify for an exemption. And this application was reviewed on the same evening, November 13th, and as mentioned by the vice mayor, that was a 4-0 vote, so that is the type of... Public notification was provided for this application, mailed to property owners and residents, as well as published in the San Gabriel Sun. And the recommendation before the city council this evening is to conduct a public hearing and discuss the proposed ordinance number 699, wave full reading and introduce ordinance 699 for annexation and pre-zoning by title only, and wave future reading, and to schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Samantha. Are there any technical or factual questions to clarify the report?
Just have one, Mayor. So when we do an annexation, that means that now they're part of the city, and we are able to have, collect taxes on it.
That's correct.
You should do more of these. A lot more land. We're only 4.1 square miles. Okay. And so it has to be very, I'm sure LA County doesn't like to give up any land, so this is a very specific scenario, I guess, transaction, so...
Correct, and it's still subject to their own commission meeting as well. So this is the first step, that the city has reviewed the application and does not have significance concern with the application.
Okay, yeah, it looks pretty straightforward to me, but I just wanted to make sure it's understood that it's now part of our, it would be part of our city. Okay, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Further questions? Repaying question?
Real quick, just a logistical question. If this happens, because it's a county piece of property right now, it's got a four-digit address, so then they would just kind of get renumbered into a three-digit address, the way our city does things?
As to addressing, I believe the current process is, there is an application process that would come before the community development department. There's an application form, and as far as sequencing, that would be reviewed as part of the application process.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that's all.
I think it would keep the same address as the big property, because it's getting annexed into that.
Oh, okay.
But it has an address.
It won't have a separate address, it'll just kind of get sucked into the...
Yep.
I see, thank you.
Finally, so, bigger property address.
Yep.
Okay, I want to clear, so, actually, this kind of request is, first of all, the property owner have to request through the city to agree, to accept it, because the, you know, around our city of San Gabriel, it's a lower address, it's called a San Gabriel, but it's belonged to the county, not the city. So is any, like, property owner, if they currently with the county, they can do the same request? That's my clear question then.
Yes, they can make an application, but as far as whether or not it's contiguous to something, there's a purpose to something. The process would be similar, where it would come before the city council, and the same type of information would be presented, and then it would be subject to this discretionary process, and then that would be forwarded to LAFCO for consideration. But yes, I mean, the application can be made by any property owner. In fact, the city can make that application, so there are two forms.
Okay. Well, city size, if they belong to the city, we can get a property tax. That's the advantage for the city too, right?
But it would also include the consent of the property owners, and having interest to shift all of that.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. So, and, but even today, we approve, but it's still county to accept it too. If county say no, right? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Wu? Nothing?
No, no party.
All right, me neither.
It's easy.
Me neither. I have zero questions.
There's no reason I say no to this. We are getting the property tax.
Right. So I'll open up, I will open up public comment then. Are there any members of the public? Do we have any comments?
No.
Nothing on the website? Anyone have any comment? I will close public comment, and then I will also close the public hearing. Is there any deliberation or discussion or motions? Discussion, deliberation, motion, anything above?
I make a motion.
To?
To approve.
Approve staff.
Because of those tax revenue laws.
You don't need motivation.
Yeah, I was thinking.
All right, I have a motion and a second, please vote.
We have no continued business this evening. Our next item is new business item A, agreement with AEF Systems Consulting Incorporated for enterprise resource planning advisory services in the amount of $47,970. Finance Director Kehola Kula will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. The item for you tonight is a consulting agreement to assist the city in replacing its current enterprise resource planning, or ERP, system. Currently, the city utilizes Tyler Technologies Eden system for its ERP system. We've had the Eden system since was implemented in 2003. The Eden system is utilized for budgeting, payroll, accounts payable, purchasing, fixed assets, and job costing. The current annual maintenance cost for our Eden system is $40,500, and Tyler Technologies has informed us that as of February 2027, they will no longer support the Eden system. Tyler submitted a quotation of the city to upgrade to their latest ERP system called Tyler ERP System. The quote was 292,000 one-time implementation costs, 121,500 annual maintenance cost, a few expenses thrown in there, and the total proposed cost to upgrade to the Tyler ERP system is $431,000. In regards to ERP systems, best practices recommend diligent steps to design, procure, and implement the ERP system. Therefore, staff broke the project out into two broad phases. Phase one, which is basically here before you tonight with this agreement, is perform a needs analysis of the current ERP system, draft and issue a request for proposal, RFP, for a new ERP system, and then evaluate and negotiate a new or upgraded ERP system based on the responses to those proposals. And then phase two, a contract will be brought before the city council to approve an agreement with a new ERP provider, and then there'll be a multi-phase ERP implementation process. In October, staff issued an RFP to hire an expert consultant in the municipal ERP space to assist staff in phase one of the ERP replacement project. The specific task that we will be asking the consultant to assist us with is project management, needs assessment, gap analysis of our current ERP system, where can we improve, where do we need more capabilities of our ERP system, develop an RFP, request for proposal to procure a new ERP system, create an action plan to implement the new ERP system, lead the evaluation of the responses to the RFP to help us evaluate ERP systems and vendors. And once we identify the ERP system vendor that we'd like to go with, then the consultant will help us negotiate the contract with the selected ERP vendor. Thirteen proposals were received in response to the RFP for ERP consulting services. The bid amounts ranged from $47,970,000 to $365,000. Staff reviewed each proposal and selected four firms to move forward in the evaluation process. Virtual interviews were conducted with the four selected firms, and based on the process that was conducted, AEF Consulting Systems was selected as the optimal choice for the project. Tonight, we have Megan Delaney from AEF is here, in case there are any questions specifically for the consultant from AEF. So AEF Consulting has decades of municipal ERP consulting experience. When we contacted the references, there was a history of a positive track record, and they provided the most competitive bid. So staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with AEF Consulting Incorporated for ERP advisory services. The total cost for the consulting agreement is $47,970. There are funds in the general fund to pay for the project, currently budgeted. And then future next steps, phase two of the project, so after we get through phase one, staff will be looking to bring on the new ERP vendor. So probably looking next year, fiscal year '24, '25, we'll be asking the city council for funds to pay for the new ERP system, along with bringing a contract for an agreement with a new ERP system provider. That concludes the presentation. Could take any questions you may have, and as mentioned, Megan Delaney from AEF Consulting Services is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Do we have any council questions or clarifications? Ms. Chaka.
Thank you. So on page two, well, actually, on slide two, the bids range from $47,970 to $365,000. That's a significant range, and, you know, I want to make sure the public understands, and of course, the rest of this council, that we're not compromising in any way skills or talents or professionalism here. Can you explain, because the only thing I can think of is the scope. Maybe the scope was different, but, you know, you gave it to them. Can you explain why there's such a wide range of pricing that was provided for us?
Yeah, I think the reason why there was such a wide range in pricing was, I think there were just vendors who don't have a full understanding of the municipal ERP environment. There's a lot of technology firms out there that can bid on for-profit, and I think when they see a city, they're willing to create a proposal and submit it. And so, you know, so that's why if they can submit it high, maybe they'll get lucky. But, you know, with our thorough process, we've got the top four, three of the top four, Client First Technology, SDI Presence, and AEF Systems are recognized in the municipal ERP space, the technology space. We've worked with Client First Technology here in the city of San Gabriel before, whereas the other technology firms are not really familiar in this space. And so that's, you know, why I would surmise why they could have a bid that can just be way out of whack to what the project should entail.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions, factual questions?
Quick clarification question. Just from my understanding, and probably for everyone, I think we've been using this ERP system for the last 20-odd years, or whatever it is. And definitely you weren't here when the last changeover happened, but do you, what is the need and benefit of hiring a consultant firm like this, as opposed to just going straight from us to purchasing an ERP system? And how did it happen? I don't know, was anyone here 20 years ago, when, the last time they did a changeover, and how did they handle that? Just curious.
So I'll just take on your first question. So, you know, the ERP systems is going to be a very, you know, purchasing, moving to a new ERP system is just going to be a very thorough process. We're going to be meeting and talking with multiple ERP software vendors. As we know, software vendors, when they go and present to you, they're going to show you all of their bells and whistles, I can do this, I can do that, and it's going to move fast, and they're going to, you know, show you what you want to see, but once you go to implement it, it's a whole new story. And so bringing on a consultant who's an expert in the space is going to set the schedule, or, well, first, there's going to be the analysis of our current ERP system, where we need to improve, if we want to move to more of a workflow virtual environment than being such paper-based, then that's something that we're going to identify, the needs assessment, gap analysis, then we're going to take that to the vendor demonstrations, and they're going to be able to say, this is exactly what we want to see your system do, can you do it? And then also knowing the vendors out there, so we'll get a clear picture of what each ERP system can do, scripted by the consultant, and then we'll move into the negotiation where the modules that we procure, we'll be able to negotiate those and ensure that we're only purchasing the ones, or paying for the ones that we actually need. So I think, you know, the $47,000 investment is going to save us in the long term of just getting the right system that we'll probably have for, you know, another 20 years.
Thank you for the explanation. That's all I have.
Councilmember Ding.
Yeah, just want to also, the question is, the ERP system just a general name or just the software self?
It's...
It's like accounting, the software, something like that?
Yeah.
It's especially for the city use the software?
It's your financial system.
Financial system, okay.
Does your payroll, your budgeting, your...
Okay, but currently, we use the Tyler Technology Eden system, that's, they do the special design for the software? They own the software?
Correct, yeah. We're on their Eden module, Tyler's Eden module.
Okay, and currently, you want a consultant, that's meaning that some consultant, they use the, this Tyler's designed Eden system to give it to us, the city, the consultant? Is that correct? No? It's direct from the company, the Tyler too? Okay.
No, the consultant we'll bring in will kind of lead us through this ERP procurement process.
But the consultant is directly provided from the software company called the Tyler? It's different?
Different, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so you helped.
We're completely independent.
Okay.
We are not...
You are not on the software, but you are consultant, expert for the, okay.
Right, and I, our group is very conversant with everybody that's out there, and so we'll help find the right one for you.
For the city.
Right, and I'd like to make one clarifying point. Tyler bought Eden. Tyler has bought a number of systems.
Okay.
And they have proposed an upgrade. It's a completely new product, so it would be a completely new implementation. So if you're going to do that, you better look at everybody out there before you start a completely new implementation, because they use the semantics, the word upgrade, it's not. So I want to make sure that Will understands this, that's why he got us involved.
Actually, Tyler is just holding the, like a Microsoft?
Right, right.
Okay, something like that, okay.
They bought their companies.
Yeah, and then your company, the consultant teach people, or help people to, how to use the software?
We find the right one.
Right one?
We do an assessment to see where your pain points are, what's working and what isn't, and what you need, and then we try and help you determine the right fit with the right client, with the right vendor.
So you actually help us to, the city, to find the right software? For the future, if any software have problem, it's you have the consultant from the Tyler self?
Right.
Is that right? Is that right, or your company to provide it?
The vendor would, we would help you select one.
Select, yeah, select from the Tyler, which one module we want, right? And after then, the service, it's a direct from the Tyler, Eden system self, or your company to help to, for the, like, technical support, something like that?
That would be from the vendor that you select.
Okay.
They'll provide the bulk of the implementation services and then the continuing support.
Okay.
We're here as a completely independent and unbiased group to help you navigate all the different products out there.
Okay, so which, like, which one module is a fit to our city? That's, yeah, which one, which one, I think, which one, so you would be buy the different module from different company?
Yeah.
Right. You're looking at all companies.
It's not the only, only for the Eden system, or maybe somewhere else too?
Right.
At this point, our scope is to replace all the modules that you currently have with the Eden system.
Yeah, just one company, Eden system, not the different companies.
No, I'm not going to look at your permit system, or your business license, or anything else. Right now, we're just looking at the ERP.
Eden one system, from one vendor. That's, yeah.
I think, might be misunderstanding, or tell me if I'm wrong, but, no, they're looking at Eden systems through Tyler, but that's only one of our options. They're trying to go out there to the whole public and find us the best option, the best company that will give us the financial software we need.
No, it's for municipal...
They're using Eden right now. That is our...
Yeah, Eden system right now, but we still continue to use the Eden, or based on the councilmember's chance, say, maybe you can find, you will be finding another company, the software?
Yes, that's what we're doing. Hiring them to find us the best system, it could be...
Best company.
Best system. Maybe we don't use the Eden system anymore, we use the somewhere else too?
The Eden system is actually aging out.
Yes.
You have to leave it by 2027.
Yeah, based on, yeah, okay. Actually, you help us find a, maybe, system or somewhere else. Okay, that's how I want to really clear, actually, I'm used to do the computer science too, okay? So that's why I want to really clarify, so it's what's going on there. So, H, okay, and based on the current, our annual cost is $40,000, but if everything's a new one, so it looks like annual maintenance fee will be almost triple that, right? $121,000 for annual maintenance cost, right?
That was the quote we received from Tyler for their new system, for their...
Or to Tyler's self, they proposed it.
They said, okay, we're not going to, we're not going to support Eden anymore, but here's our new system that we want to move you to, and here's the, here's what it'll cost, here's the annual maintenance cost.
So that's why we need AFS, AF...
AEF.
AEF, to help us to either continue with the Eden or find someone else, the software. Is that correct? Okay?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, okay. So we just, like, today just discussed for the E, I still, AEF, the consultant fee?
Correct, yeah, just the consultant.
One-time consultant.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, clarify.
Ms. Chaka, any questions?
I just want to move to approve. To me, I mean, I'm not...
Yeah, we have a process.
I know.
I have no clarifying questions. I think I understood the presentation and the published material. Do we have any public comments?
I have no speaker cards.
We have one in the crowd.
Yeah, I got to put my two cents in, right? The question I have is for Will, did our staff maybe go out to see other cities, what they're using, and kind of like a best practice kind of thing, just to kind of get an idea where we might want to go? And then the other thing is, when we do bring in this new system, do you have any kind of estimate on what it's going to cost to train all of our staff in this new system?
Sure, we have an idea of the systems that are out there. Some cities are moving to the Tyler ERP system, there's some cities moving to Oracle's Net Suites, and then with the help of the consultant, you know, we'll be able to look at all of the, you know, systems that might fit the city that are out there. As far as the cost to training staff, from the examples that we've seen, it's, it could be done in-house, where there'll be no additional funding, nor additional cost to train staff, but there will be, you know, those challenges of bringing on a new ERP system, so there may be additional cost, because, you know, definitely there's going to be more time involved, along with our regular duties of learning a new system. Thank you, Will.
Will, that actually brings me to this question then, are these out-of-the-box systems, or are they customized? Will, that actually brings me to this question then, are these out of the box systems, or are they customized?
They're out of the box. These days, they're out of the box, but very configurable. You can do it this way or that way. You can do a lot of design within them.
Flipping the levers, it's not programming anything.
That's right.
Got it. All right, so anyone else in the audience have any, would like to address counsel? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Time for council discussion? Discussion? No discussion? Discussion?
I move to approve.
You have to use enthusiasm, I'm not gonna accept your motion. I know it's late.
I'm watching the clock.
And I'll be enthusiastic, I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, please vote to staff recommended action, I can hear it.
Motion passes by vote of five zero.
Thank you, next item, please.
Agreement with Grizzly Entertainment for a drone show for the twenty twenty-four Independence Day celebration, any amount of forty-five thousand dollars. Community Services Director Perez will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Harrington, and members of the City Council. Tonight, staff is bringing forward a possible drone show for the twenty twenty-four Independence Day celebration. In past years, Community Services hosted the parade and Kids' Day on July fourth. City Council interested, indicated that they may be interested in an evening event and expressed interest in a drone show for the twenty twenty-four Independence Day celebration. Three companies responded, the company with the most reasonable quote is only available on July third or July seventh. Staff recommends moving forward with July third. Here you can see the quotes that were submitted. It's important to note that the drone show runs between ten to twelve minutes, and the animations are between eight and ten minutes. Here, to get a sense of the different numbers of drones, here's a sample video of each. Marilyn, can you help me with this? Or do I? So this first video is of two hundred drones. And this next example is four hundred drones. In considering an event on July third, this show could kick off the holiday. Many residents will be off work on July fourth, so it could be out late for an event. This would be different than Alhambra and Rosemead, which host events on July fourth. And staff recommends that the event be held at Gaberlino High School baseball field with the drones staged on the football field. This would create a picnic environment with food and activity booths, so that residents can make an afternoon and evening of it. Total cost for the proposed July third drone show with Grizzly Entertainment for the four hundred drones is forty-five thousand dollars. The budget for this event is fifty thousand two hundred and fifty. While this does not include staffing costs for all departments to work the event, the budget should be enough to cover the drone show and entertainment. Should additional funds be needed for entertainment or other event costs, staff will ask for additional funding at mid-year budget. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council approve a show with Grizzly Entertainment on Wednesday, July third, for three hundred and fifty to four hundred drones at a cost of forty-five thousand dollars. And discuss show location. If approved, staff also recommends that the City Council authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Grizzly Entertainment. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, do we have any factual questions to clarify the report? Mr. Mayor Woo?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Rebecca for the presentation. Just a quick question about the drone, number of drones. Why there is a showing like fifty difference? I mean, this is a price that we are paying, but it could be like three hundred fifty or four hundred. So if fifty is missing, then we probably cannot spell the whole things Independence Day, and we probably A and Y will be missing. So why not four hundred?
So I asked them that question, and depending on the image that they're trying to portray, it will range between that value. It'll range between the three hundred and fifty and four hundred. As you can see in the videos that they provided, which are shows that they've actually done, it was listed as two hundred and, and four hundred. But they give that range, because there may be a point where they, they don't need the full, the full range of the drones.
So why are they having those drones on the air? How about the music?
So they do not, the, the drone company does not provide the music. The music would be, they would provide the timing and the animations, and then they would sync that with a DJ. So we would have a DJ in addition, our proposal would be to have a band that we would have play before the, before the drone show, and have a DJ that would be there to play the music along with the show.
So this is a, in, this is the whole package? I mean, the DJ is from us, or?
The, the DJ would be something that we would be, we would be paying for.
Okay, I see. Do we need to buy insurance for this? I mean, when the drone is flying, and if there's any damage to drones, that will be their problem, right? It'll be not ours.
So the, the entire drone show, again, excluding the music, is included in that forty-five thousand dollars. We will be having further conversations with the school district, because we are proposing to do this on school district property, whether or not we would need to provide additional insurance. I don't anticipate that it would be anything above and beyond our current insurance provider, that we could provide like an evidence of coverage. But we've not had those detailed conversations with them, other than talking about the locations.
I see. And what about the parking? I know that the school parking, we are able to park in the school area, but what about the, there's a mission church or something? Is there any way that we can borrow the, the parking space from them as well?
I'm not, I'm not sure, the, the mission church that you're talking about, we're talking about Gaberlino High School, which is down on San Gabriel Boulevard.
Right, but it's just so close, walking to San, there's another church, that they have a huge parking.
Yeah, they, they usually use it for like, when they have to evacuate the campus, they go to this church.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
It's down the street.
Yeah, the Mission Valley Free Church is where the mission name comes from.
Okay. I'm not familiar with that, to be honest, haven't gotten yet to that point of, of where parking will be aside from, potentially Gaberlino has more parking than we were looking at, at, at Vincent Lugo Park. So that was what we were looking at.
So are we able, since we are doing pretty well so far for, like, finding the sponsors for our lantern festival, are we able to, do we have any issues that we cannot invite the sponsors to participate this event?
I, I'm not aware of any issues, the drone company, just in my initial conversations with them, they have indicated that they would work with us if we do have a sponsor that wanted to get their name in there. They, they understand and they're familiar with doing that. So for example, if a, if vendor wanted to sponsor us, they could potentially have their name in drones, or their logo in drones. We've not explored that yet, but that would be an option.
I see, okay. That's all my question, thank you.
Thank you, any other clarifying questions?
A quick, easy one, hopefully. Just looking at the, the agreement, the contract, red page five, section two regarding the fees. So we're looking at hiring this company, it would be, my understanding is forty-five thousand dollar flat fee? And then, maybe it's in the wording of the way they kind of lay this out. Then the, the next paragraph talks about accommodation at the nearby hotel. Now, that's included in that forty-five thousand dollars?
I believe that is included.
Okay, just 'cause, it's just weird the way they, they, they put it, forty-five thousand in the first paragraph, then second paragraph, they talk about accommodations. But if it's all, you know, part of it, then, yeah. And I just wanted to clarify.
Understood, and I can get clarification on that.
Thank you. That's all I had. Are you?
Thank you, any other questions, clarifying questions?
Yeah, just like, talking about insurance, so the company, they will be provided, based on here, is two, two million dollars, the insurance, right? On the page six. FAA compliance and the insurance?
Yes.
So they will be provided? That, that, the drone company will be providing insurance?
Their insurance, yes.
So, but I also wanna find out, just in case, we, we are like a JPI, they, if just in case, they, people, something happen, they also want to, not just this, maybe this insurance amount not enough, so is the, is the JPI will be covered at this kind of special event?
We will need to look into that, but yes, for our other events that we have, we, we have, JPI has provided insurance.
Okay.
We also have the ability to work with, we've also worked with a company called Alliant, that we could look into as well, for special events.
And then plus have the, the, the school district, maybe they asking the insurance too, so that's the, I think, well, we'll be, have to think about it too, because special, really special event.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've not explored that avenue yet, we want to, to get this, get council's thoughts on this and get moving forward on this, before we look into all of, all of the details in terms of.
Forty-five thousand just for the drone, but the budget have a fifty thousand, around a fifty thousand, so for the like food and entertainment, DJ, so that's where we, the budget will be, can cover that, the DJ will be, they will be charging us too, right? DJ for the music?
The, yes, we definitely would be paying for, if we wanted to, to have a band, a stage, potentially we could bring in the stage, but a band and or DJ, we would need to pay that out. So the thought is that at least the majority of that could be covered within the existing budget. If there are any additional costs, as we mentioned, we would bring that forward, hopefully at part of, as part of our mid-year budget.
Like you have food, food trucks should be, they pay for it, right? We, 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 we want them pay for it, or we pay, the city would be paying some minimum amount, something like that?
If we were to have food trucks, you, you don't pay to, to bring them out, they, they.
They whatever, they.
That people would, would pay for their food.
All right.
People would have the ability, obviously, to picnic as well, in the, and bring their own food.
Okay.
Which could be an, an option for someone that didn't want to, to purchase food.
Like a picnic as a cell, but we still, city will still find some food truck, just in case that people, they can. Okay. Same to like, usually in the Vincent Lugo Park for the summer event too, right? All right, so, and, compare with the, the location, so I just wanna see the, because right now they're in the Gaberino, okay, not to pick up the, the Vincent Lugo Park or Smith's Park or Mission Playhouse. So why the, the pick up the, the Gaberino to have this kind of show?
So, so the options that are provided for the council to review would be the baseball field at Gaberlino, which is on the south, and actually the north side of the campus, with the drones being staged on the football field. Or the crowd could sit, the, the, show could be on the football field, but the, the audience, because that's a turf field, an artificial turf field, the school district was not inclined to have people sitting on the turf field, so the crowd would need to then sit in the stands. And our thought with that, with those two options, would be that the baseball field kind of creates more of a picnic environment. People can bring out their chairs, can bring out their blankets if they, if they want to sit there. The drones could then be staged on the football field. The other option would be to move to Vincent Lugo Park and have the crowd sitting in the park, and have the drones staged on the McKinley Field. So that would be another option that council could consider.
They're only like, considered the like parking, so, so which one is more convenient for the people coming?
I would, I would say Gaberlino has more parking than the, than the park.
Okay, because of the church, and because also have the superstar, the cross street. The cross street too. Oh, okay. All right, thank you, Rebecca. It's, yeah, at least we, city have the really like, different, the, the event, compare our, the neighborhood city. Thank you, prepare. That's it?
No questions here? Public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two comments that were submitted via the city website, which the city clerk bonus will read for us.
The first comment is from Chastity Jenny Nunez, resident, and it's, do not support seven B. To the City Council members and city manager, tonight I am choosing to spend time with my family, instead of attending the meeting to address this absurd agenda item. At the October three meeting, the public made it very clear that they did not want fireworks, and no one outside of the city council members asked for a drone show. Approving forty-five thousand dollars for a twelve-minute drone show should not be on the agenda. This entire idea is self-promotion for the city council. There are longstanding and very popular fireworks displays in Alhambra, San Marino, Pasadena, and South Pasadena. The budget for a traditional Fourth of July parade and Kids' Day event was fifty-five hundred for twenty twenty-three. You are now considering nine times the amount for just fifteen minutes worth of entertainment. Are you proposing two separate events or an all-day festival? No one is going to go to all the trouble of coming to the Mission District for a fifteen-minute show only. What is the actual cost for a new Fourth of July festival? It is enraging that the best idea that our five city council members can come up with for fifty thousand is a drone show. In this period of increased inflation, record-setting homelessness, record-setting home, and rent prices of human suffering on a. and rent prices of human suffering on a scale that I can't remember in the last few decades, surely there are better ways to spend this money. Here are some ideas. Number one, support the S G V Humane Society and the local residents by waiving the dog licensing fee until June thirtieth for one dog per household. Last year, the S G V H S took in forty thousand dollars. Number two, partner with and provide a city grant to the Mission Food Pantry or purchase hotel vouchers for homeless families. Number three, waive the fee for community services sponsored senior trips for twenty-twenty-four. Number four, provide a budget for programming and training for each of the commissions. Number five, the Public Works Department has done amazing things with small budgets by keeping work in-house. Fifty thousand dollars would go a long way into refurbishing and changing rooms at Smith Park Pool. Number six, at this point, I would rather see you have one drone and a money drop of two thousand twenty-dollar bills on the Fourth of July, since you are willing to literally burn off fifty thousand for fireworks. If the five of you are unable to find a better use of fifty thousand dollars, you should resign and make room for new people with new ideas that do more for the community than allow the city council members to smile and wave to a backdrop of drone images. Sincerely hoping you will make the right decision, Dr. Chastity Jennings Nunes. Our next comment is from Jean Raya, seven B, "Do not support," and she is one of our residents. It reads as follows, "I regret that I am unable to appear this evening to speak in opposition to the expenditure of forty-seven thousand for a drone show. This is nearly all of the budget allocation for the Fourth of July event, not including staffing costs for all departments involved. And please note the staff reports that fifty K should be enough to cover the drone show and entertainment. If only our city's small businesses and residents could count on spending more when a budgeted amount is insufficient. Please consider how the spending appears to your constituents and give a thought to other recreational needs such as improvements to Smith Park Pool that would make it available to residents year-round. We are not in competition with our neighbors for Fourth of July entertainment. But if you are determined to have drones, at least consider Grizzly's July three option, which would leave nearly half the budget for other expenses mentioned, including staff, insurance, a concert and other activities."
Thank you. Are any members in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Now time for council discussion. Any discussion items? Councilman Chaka?
Sure. Well, um, I'm in support of this. Um, I think there's always choices. There's always something we can do with monies. Um, but I think the community is ready for change. What we've been doing with the parade is, um, we haven't had, have had the enthusiasm or the turnout frankly, for, for years. And, um, the holiday tree lighting, I think, is a great example how we, we insisted on change and it happened and my God, we, we did such a great job. Unfortunately, I couldn't be present, but my spirit was there. There was so many, um, photos and videos that I was able to see and, and I have to tell you, when I saw the snow, I thought it was Clara, you know, doing her magic. I thought it was a filter. And then I started seeing it over and over again, realized it was real, or maybe not real snow, but it was snow-like. And then of course, um, Public Works with their, which is still out there, um, the lighting, the tunnel lighting. I, I think all that is just stating that, um, again, the community is ready for change. And it's not about competing with other cities, but at least providing our residents something homegrown. I think that was the whole point with vice mayor is why are people leaving when we can have them here and we need to be providing it, stepping up? The drone, we would be the first to have something like that. I think it's exciting. I think, um, you know, as council, we need to always look at ways that we can keep our community engaged and I think this is a great idea. Um, so I, I'm just gonna mention some things. I'm kind of going all over the place here. But I, I wanna, um, cite, for example, the Lantern Lunar Festival, thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Ding and Vice Mayor Wu. You know, we're gonna have it first time ever. It's gonna be different from all these other cities. It's gonna be later. Um, and they've been able to secure sponsorship, so even though we have about, I think, thirty K we've allocated, um, it looks like it'll probably be zero at this point because you've worked so hard in getting sponsorship. I would also encourage all of us to try to get sponsorships to cover the cost. Um, but if we're saving from there, we can always move it over. I know it's just geography, but we can move it from one event to another. Um, but I, I would just encourage us to, to continue to look for sponsorship and, you know, I can, I volunteer to be on that committee, um, if no one else wants to do it. Um, I think everybody would have to be on deck. That includes the economic development team, making sure that we have our local vendors, get them excited. I know with the holiday tree lighting, it was kind of a, kind of a last minute, so we only got maybe six or seven vendors. But I think now we have more time. It's something new, something exciting. Get our businesses involved. Um, making sure that it's not an expo, that it's a carnival-style event, because there's a big difference there. Um, I would like to, to see in this carnival style, you know, the train seems to be very popular, definitely during the holiday tree lighting, but I've seen this little train in other events and it's just, just a fun thing to do. Uh, of course, the balloon lady bringer for this event, our veterans, they have that gentleman who brings all that, um, uh, military uniforms from, from the past, um, invite him, of course, have the concert. The food trucks, I'm not as excited about to be honest. I was just thinking if there was a way that we can either give out the hot dogs and hamburgers or, you know, at a, at a minimal cost, five dollars gets you a hot dog and chips. But the food trucks for these type of events, it doesn't seem to be as popular. They are a little expensive too for a family. But if that's something, I know in the past, we used to have for our Fourth of July parade, hot dogs and watermelon, I think it was? Pardon?
Contest.
Oh, watermelon, well, I don't know if we have to go that far, but yes.
I remember.
So, uh, you know, that, that would be some of my recommendations. Uh, let's see. Change is good, yeah, sponsorships to kind of, um, offset the cost. I also, um, printed something from Rosemeat. Rosemeat has been doing a phenomenal job for years. Um, that their, their celebration is called "Celebrating Heroes in Our Community." And theirs actually starts from ten AM to, to the fireworks to dusk. And I'm not saying we have to, um, copy everything, but they have some really good ideas here. They actually have a parade, but it's on Valley Boulevard. Um, and then they have their carnival and then they have community performers, maybe something to think about. Some of our, our local performers there as well as our DJ to do the background music. They have family games and activities. Um, they even have a dog parade. Uh, and then, um, opening ceremonies and then, um, they have their, their band, um, in this case, last year it was called Detroit Knights. And then they have the fireworks. So anyway, I, I think we can, we can do a lot and I think we can get a lot more people involved and I, I will stand by this. I don't believe it's a waste of money. And I believe, I, I'm very comfortable letting our community know, um, if we do decide, um, that this is something that this council is supporting. And so, um, anyway, so, so those, so I'm, I'm fully supporting this and I hope the rest of the council does too. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else with comment or reminder of the time?
Okay.
I have to bring you back on Christmas Eve, I will.
Yeah, I, uh, I agree the council member Mechenka mentioned and, and the vice mayor would about that, even this kind of city event, so we can use the example for the, our Lunar New Year this year. We have budgeted thirty thousand dollars, but actually we didn't use it, right? It's a, it's a, it's a radio, they, they cover their own costs. We, the budget, the thirty thousand dollars, we, we keep it in the city. The same thing, maybe find a sponsorship for the, for the drone show, maybe no less cost for the, for the, uh, for the city too. So, yeah, so maybe, yeah, we can still suggest, you have the some, establish some, some sponsorship for the local vendor. And by the way, in a, in a drone show, we want to have the, our city with a mission, city with the Mission Playhouse. If they can have the, this kind of, right?
Do a mission, like, run in shape of mission?
That was our city attorney's idea. He wants to see the mission.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Up there. That would be really cool.
Playhouse too, you know, if they can do it, right? Whatever is, we, we, we can lay down, can suggest it. So it's a really unique, I think a kids.
A lot of our local businesses, their names can go up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sponsorship opportunities.
Sponsorships that was mentioned earlier, put their names up there.
Yeah, and, and, and some, maybe because we use the Gaberino, maybe just let the Gaberino that can help them, they promote their, their, their school too, right?
Definitely show the eagle, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I, that's my suggestion too.
Comment? Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council member, my colleagues. And I would like to special, just give a credit to Rebecca because for the Lantern Festival that she's been working so hard and we are very fortunate, not only, uh, trying to make like a zero dollars paying out, but we also got the new lanterns, a brand-new one from Shilai Temple, that they are able to, uh, lend us their new lanterns that they supposed to use by themselves, but they ready to let us use first. So that's a, uh, we, we try to save every single penny for the taxpayer, but enjoy the whole community event. I think July fourth is also one of the, uh, a great event that we will be having. Even this year, we will not be on July, next year will not be July fourth, but July third, because the cost, uh, we consider about the cost, but maybe the two thousand twenty-fifth, that will be, uh, July fourth, if we can just book that or plan, pre-plan that a little bit early. And I think, uh, to me, this is a, one of the greatest things happens that allows our residents and citizens in our city that feel pride that we have our own Independence Day celebrations with air drone. Thank you very much.
Also, I forgot to mention very environmentally friendly.
That's true.
The firework, right?
Okay, well, I'll be real quick. I, I echo my, uh, my colleague's sentiments and so I'm in favor. Um, just a clarification for maybe Mark or Rebecca. Tonight, the decision we're making, are we not only, are we only deciding to do it or not? Or are we also, uh, choosing the, the venue and?
Ideally, if you, if you can discuss the venue and, and confirm the location and then it, the recommendation is to go with the four hundred drones, but if council was inclined to only go with the two hundred drones, we're obviously open to that suggestion as well.
Okay. No, I, I would be in favor of the four hundred drones and, and the picnic environment, the, the one where we use the high school and,
Baseball field.
Baseball field, football. That, that, that's my, my preference, so. I, that's all I had to say. I yield.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to kind of bring everything together and I would say I support a lot of what my council has said. I agree with Councilman Chaka that it should be an event, you know, it's not a, it's not just the show. There's a lot of stuff that leads up to the show and that's how most Fourth of July events are on, and we have opportunities, like we could bring in Humane Society, have an adoption event and the veterans can have their display and a city manager dunk tank and all the fun stuff that goes with, uh, Fourth of, yeah, okay, mayor dunk day, because I won't be the mayor.
And just, just to be clear, staff is not recommending to do the morning event.
I, I, I understand. Yeah, this is a replacement event. We, I think we all got that.
It would be a late afternoon to the show.
Yes. And so that's why I'm saying start when it's still light out and move to the, when the drones start and I, I would like to personally see lots of brainstorming from staff about, you know, ways to incorporate the community, different organizations, businesses, just bring them all, bring us all together to create Independence Day. I mean, that, I'd love to see a lot of ideas other than what was discussed tonight. Just make it a, a great event. I'm in support and I'll entertain a motion.
So can I motion to approve that, uh, uh, for the drone shows and have our city manager to enter the contract?
With Gaberino?
With Gaberino, yes, and four hundred drones.
So we are, the motion is for the four hundred drones and, and the venue, the, the?
On July third.
Right, on July third and the, the football slash baseball field.
Gaberino with the four hundred drones.
Okay.
Three fifty to four hundred.
Well, but then there was Gaberino, but I think one of the options was to do it on the football field, but we're saying stage it at the football field and the residents on the baseball field.
Not to speak as a motion maker, but that's what I understood.
So, I mean, that, that is what as some,
That's the, the staff recommendation, right? Staff recommendation.
Anyone second?
Exactly.
Yep.
Second.
Right. You have direction, proper direction? That's a clear motion? Alright. So a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Do we need a motion to extend the time?
So it is after eleven, so our, our policy is no new items, so we're gonna forego the city manager's report. We're gonna forego council comments and without objection, we will adjourn at eleven oh eight. Yeah, I was gonna do that too, but I guess that's a big old N A.